...stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. And I'll open it up for any comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to any amendments, David, to the agenda?
No.
All right, an update on the city-school collaboration?
Mm-hmm. So, as I've said to the board before, Elizabeth and I have been meeting, although we've had a little hiatus recently with both Pam and Kevin from the city, Kevin Dorn and Pam McKenzie. But I did want to report to the board that the master planning and visioning process, I did have a meeting with Frank Locker and Kevin regarding the master planning and visioning, and we have some dates upcoming for us to coordinate and put together kind of a plan for then Frank Locker to submit a proposal that would then come to both the board and with the city council. We tentatively have a follow-up date on January 3rd at the present time, so it's moving fairly quickly. And again, he also is currently doing some work for Burlington, and I think that's, you know, kind of worthy of some note around discussions and configurations as well. So, I just want to report that.
Good. Any other questions or comments on city-school collaboration? Great. Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Six, an update on the current status of the Howard Center's permit to open the Methadone Clinic.
Mm-hmm. So, as I said last time, and again, we keep this on the agenda, we have submitted all of the necessary paperwork to the Supreme Court through that filing. That has been done. We will wait to find out further direction and what that next step will be for us in the dates. In addition, although not connected specifically to the Methadone Clinic, but part of our work with the land development regulations is we've submitted safety zone information to the city as well. And so that's, I know, entered into, or will be entered into for discussion for the council and the respective boards. So, I want to just thank Martin for his work and support around, you know, making that happen. So, Martin, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add to that?
I think they'll probably, it's going to start in the Planning Commission. It'll be before the Planning Commission sometime in January. It's not scheduled yet. They've already had one session where they, where it was introduced, the concept of the safety zones. But there will be additional discussion that some, yet to be determined, meeting by the Planning Commission.
So, we'll keep the board posted on those upcoming dates.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Great. We'll move on to Agenda Item Seven, our student representative report. Sabina?
So, just recently, actually yesterday, we had the Great Gatsby auditions, which is the next winter play. And it was casted yesterday. I'm personally in it. I'm a dancer. But I just think it's really awesome that they're doing that because so many of the students have read the book. And so it's really amazing to see it come alive, you know?
Yeah, yesterday, we also had our student forum. So, each class had their representatives, and that was pretty cool. We haven't yet figured out what our top goals are, but we're going to do that soon as a student council. Yeah, so we can update you on what some of the bigger issues are.
And also, we are planning the MLK PAC Day, if you guys, some of you guys have heard about it, which is on January 20th. And basically, I'm a team leader at the event, and we're going to have lots of guest speakers and also a lot of community service projects with Key Club. And Mrs. Merrick is planning it, but we hope to make it a really big event, so it's still in the process.
I know that I have a request to see what we can do to make sure that the Island students are able to participate, and so there may be some transportation support that happens that way for both the Islands and the Georgia students that are currently students as well. So, that request has come to me. Yeah.
Is that something we'll get information on beforehand?
Yeah. So, as that shapes up, you know, we'll need to make sure the board's invited and informed about that. And so, again, I did put that out as part of the request, you know, about for transportation.
I can tell you it's nine to 12 on January 20th.
Okay, more information?
And it will start with a speaker, and then the team-led dialogue, and followed by a community service project. And I believe Charles Johnson will be the keynote speaker in the morning, so.
What's the community service project, do you know?
I think that the Key Club is heading that up. I'm not really sure what they decided.
This happened at a PAC meeting, a recent PAC.
It's part of PAC, yeah. And PAC has invited a lot of different groups to participate.
Usually Suzie and Steve are good about, you know, keeping me, but probably just haven't had the opportunity yet to do that.
Good. Anything else?
Nothing.
Great, thank you. All right, David, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
So, I have some items here that we'll move through, the request for RFP on the audit of the teacher performance evaluation practice. As I reported in this packet, although I have a follow-up from this, initially, we didn't get responses. I have received a response now from a retired educator, special educator principal, whom I think will be submitting a proposal. And I expect to see that within the next week and a half to two weeks.
Does she have experience doing that?
Yes. She seems to be very experienced and trained. Again, I'd be interested to see what the proposal has, so.
Now, was this in response to the RFP?
Well, it wasn't, it was in part, remember, we put out the RFP, we posted it, and then we also had some individual, we made some individual calls to respond. And so, we would need to make sure that we're clear about continuing to open that up so that this can be accepted. But it's not zero, and again, I'm.
You got a couple of questions, David, about that. Does the VSBA have resources for us in terms of finding someone to help us with this?
Well, you know, we can, I've asked Nicole, again, there's a, there's a, this is not something that they do on a regular basis. They've done some, you know, assistance for boards around evaluation, but as far as evaluation monitoring, no. I haven't talked to Steve about it, you know, I can certainly extend out. Again, our process was, we hoped to bring in a lot of interested people to do the work, so I didn't go out and solicit beyond that, but.
Is it something that, you know, some subcommittee of the board could help you put feelers out for? I'm just wondering how we can move this process along a little bit?
Yeah, what I would suggest is that you, let's see what comes back. The board will have the opportunity to see the proposal. If, and again, this needs to happen fairly quickly, if that doesn't satisfy the board's desire, we have the right to say no, and we can then, you know, come up with figuring the next step out. But again, I was excited to have the conversation, excited about some of the training that the person brings, and so I'm hopeful.
And did, did the, does the RFP have reach outside of the Vermont area?
Well, the Burlington Free Press, of course, goes beyond the, you know, beyond our reach, although I'm not sure, you know? I mean, obviously, we post, it's posted online, that's part of the process, it's not cheap to do this, so it does reach far. I don't know the reader pool necessarily, and then obviously, School Springs reaches far too. But we didn't go out and solicit specific other, you know, you know, professional journals and things like that.
Yeah. I mean, my thought is, and maybe Karen could provide some help on this, that this assessment could actually be done outside of this area, because, you know, the records and so forth could be transmitted electronically and evaluated.
Mm-hmm. Doesn't have to be, you know?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be an onsite.
Yeah.
So, I'm wondering if we should think about expanding the reach on a, if we've gotten one response, you know, that's outside the confines of the original RFP requirements from a date standpoint, should we expand the RFP to more of a national or New England kind of basis with more targeted to the right skill sets?
Mm-hmm.
Only because this phase of it really didn't require feet on the ground, as it were.
Okay, moving along. The actual evaluation for the SBSD retirement plan, again, I'll just let John touch that for a bit.
We actually got the full report, received the full report today, and it's on, posted on the web, and you'll get an electronic copy, and you can have a hard copy too if you want. I want to thank Future Planning and my staff for getting information together. We used to get this report on February 28th, so it rates the plan through September 30th. And the, the comments from Future Planning were that we did well, quite a bit of progress toward getting funded. This year, there's tremendous rate of return on the assets, and that's market-driven, of course, with the equity, but that's in spite of cash and bonds not returning very much. And that was with, actually, People Who's United, so. Secondly, the contributions that the board has authorized the last few years have contributed to becoming more funded. So, now, the reading this time was 75.7% funded. And when we started talking, when I first got here, talking about a goal, we, our goal is to get to 80. So, we're, we're getting there now. The net assets grew by 16%. The vested liability increased by six and a half percent. And that has not yet been affected by the change in our plan regarding who's eligible to join. And so, that will, that change will stabilize and eventually reduce the liability, but that hasn't kicked in yet. And the minimum contribution by the district to the plan is reduced by $60,000 this year to $636,704, and we have $765,000 budgeted. So, so that's good, and.
You'll see more about, you know, this as we talk about budget, but that's included in there. This was in your report too, and I know it's a little redundant from both my, what I put in my report and then what's included in the, in the packet too, but consistent. Sorry, John, I don't know if you want anything else?
Good, that's it.
John, is that 80% still a good target?
It really depends on who you ask, you know, our auditors have said 100%, because the 20% that's not in the fund isn't earning, isn't earning any, or enough to keep up.
Right.
In a time like we've seen the last two years, it's good, but if we go back to a time where the equities aren't growing, it, it'll contract somewhat. So, it's, it's a good target for now. I think we should reset that when we get there. The, the one thing on this evaluation that's important for me to keep in mind is they look at our assets as of the day the plan began this year. So, that was in October 1, 2012, and our assets have grown considerably since then. So, I do expect that next year, we'll hit the 80%. That's, that's my, my belief, anyway.
And is that 100% or 80%? Does that change because this is a closed pension fund now? I don't know if that's the appropriate term, but I mean, there's not going to be new individuals coming into it because of the change to the contract.
Right.
So, can we, do we have to hit 100% at this point?
Well, that's something we need to, we need to really evaluate. I, I don't know the answer to that, but I think we need to evaluate it. And in the first two years, in fiscal '14 and '15, there are no new contributions to the 403B because we, we had a waiting year. So, when we budget for 16, that'll be the initial investment in 403B contributions for the new plan. And so, we'll need to look at how we're funding the pension plan, and so that we don't have an increase, try to keep it flat.
Yeah, well, this is excellent work, because I know when we initially had this conversation, 80% was a long way off, so.
Was a drain, yeah. Quite frankly, when, I believe you asked, what was the unfunded liability? And I, I knew it was $2 million, I was, I was a little nervous about saying that out loud.
So, making good progress.
Good progress, yeah.
Moving on, the American Disability Audit is in your packet as well. We're going to spend some time talking about that, that's included in the, in the budget proposal as well. But obviously, that's come back, and we have some, some numbers associated with that, but again, very in-depth, and we'll talk more about that when we get there. And then also, the nutrition service update, which is also in there. And again, John has provided a nutrition service report, which is a two-page document that should be by your side. I think it did go out late in electronic form, but it's by your side as well. And so, again, this, these are positive figures. Ron wanted to be here, I said you don't need to, you don't need to be here for this particular moment, but certainly want to give you credit for doing some of the heavy lifting work and the decisions around some of these changes that are happening for our children in the area of nutrition. So, again, I think the figures, the graph speaks for itself. I don't know if there's specific questions. Again, we're going to, we can, I think, move this along when we get to it on the agenda, but certainly appropriate if you have questions now.
This is nice.
I've never seen a 1,980% improvement.
I know. Unbelievable.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, we did, we got this so late, I didn't have a chance to look at it, so. Will, will you cover this during budget?
Yes, it does come up again, but again, it's, it's your choice. It will be in the, it is in our packet.
Okay. Why don't we hold off, unless anyone has specific questions, we'll cover it then? Great.
Okay, so we're going to move on to a small topic, talking about the budget. And so, we do have a presentation for you. It's basically what you have, it's what you have available in your packet. I know, again, this also went out late. I want to really commend John and his office for holding out for all of the information to try to put all this together the best possible way we could. I think that said, it's still always a complicated process because we don't have all of the information to try to figure out a very important component of the work we do, how we fund it. So, again, I did put a letter, now I'm not going to read the letter, but I, I think it's safe to say that, you know, I'll just kind of paraphrase, we obviously have some budget challenges this year, coupled with also our opportunity and desire to provide really relevant and important opportunities for our students. We've, I've talked about kind of these expanded learning opportunities connected to some of our business entrepreneurial focus, which is alive and well, although I think recognizing financial savings at the present time certainly is not something that this budget recognizes, but it's an important component to our ongoing work. This 2014, 2015 budget addresses the following, and there's some recommendations and opportunities. Again, taking advantage of a dual, the dual enrollment offerings that are out and available at the local colleges and universities, and we're working to figure those things out as they get more defined under Act 77 and the rollout. Working to align our schedule with the high schools, area high schools, to improve more learning opportunities. Preparation for the fifth grade move, which is on our agenda for discussion this, tonight. Future budgets that align with the capital reserve fund from the city, and again, this is connected also to the visioning work that, that I talked about earlier as we move the, move the city and school forward. Some concerns and challenges before we get into the budget, obviously, you know, we have some mandates that are coming down that are part of what we have to do in our work, and that's the common core. Obviously, healthcare increases that we see at the four and a half percent of the premium costs. Obviously, complying with the Affordable Care Act. Information and technology, kind of looking at those services. The nutrition service deficit that we currently know, although we're working to get out of, the negotiated agreements, adding some support for 504. And then, our English language learner population, and then as we also addressed, our pension fund. So, again, those are, you know, kind of a list. We could go on, I think, a little longer, but it's a list of some of the bigger areas that we need to focus on. So, what we want to do is just walk you through, this is the same thing you have in your packet, although it's broken up just so you can read it a little bit better, but we want to walk you through this together. And so, and John and I are, are going to kind of work collaboratively on this to, to give you that information. Before I get started, is there any questions from the board? So, hearing none, let's see if we can make this work, John. I don't know if it's going to work, so you may, just advance it there, I guess, yeah. So, this is something that the board has seen before. Obviously, our, our budget, this is last year, this is what's being proposed, a $2 million plus increase representing a 4.67% increase. Again, this is the preliminary budget. You can see that what's happening with revenues are, are on the down. Our Act 60 expenses, again, tracking at 5.96. Equalized pupils, an important factor, again, slight down by 15. Again, this is equalized pupil, these are not actual students, it's how students are weighted. And so, this is the weighted equalized. So, we're down 15. And then, obviously, getting at the per pupil cost of 15,395. And again, looking at this, which is an important component, we made this, obviously, this is the city tax rate, residential tax rate, but with the CLA is here. And so, one, one area which we've talked about before, we know that this base education amount changed. We initially heard that that was down, and then a correction last week came that that has gone back up. Also, though, a change in the, in the residential tax rate also had a change. So, the net, the net difference actually mitigated itself. Again, what this is looking at, and we're going to go on and talk more about this, but at the current preliminary budget on a 300, and this has changed from 323 average home in South Burlington to 326, and $582 increase on that, and again, the condo associated with that. John, I don't know if you want to add anything, anything I left out with this quick?
Well, we, we're going to show the condominium because that's how the city conveys it too. I think it's a good idea. The common level of appraisal number is, is one of the few things that's not available yet, but probably come, will probably come next week. Legally, it has to come here by December 31st. And there is just another slight increase downward in our, our number of equalized pupils. It's, it's a fraction, but it, it's another $5,000 hit, so. She'll show up as 2365 when you see the next, next version of the budget.
Do we know which, or is there an assignable number on equalized pupils to Act 129?
Assignable?
Well, is there kind of an equivalent of three of those 15 are due to students that are moving out of the system?
Yeah, we'll, we'll show you with, with some of the, the choice changes that have happened and what that means for us in a dollar amount. We don't get, the equalized pupil is not part of, part of that. They, they keep the ADM, and they, they bill us, so it's not part of, of that. But again, as far as the revenue generation, you will see that when we get to the, for the revenue side.
Same true for tuition? The same true for tuition students?
Same, same is true for tuition, right? The sending school keeps the, the ADM, and we bill them.
We bill them on the basis of equivalent students or on the basis of?
We base them on who comes to us.
On minds.
Right, and this is under those that don't have a high school or are under a choice agreement that was grandfathered. So, we're going, one of the next, the next one we want to share with you is just, we gave this to you last time.
When you don't have it in your pack.
But you don't have it, right? And so, we, we gave you just, if we did no change, these were the old factors and what was the representing effect. So, now we've plugged in, John's plugged in the, the new base education amount and the tax rate with no change on the budget, all right? So, there's no change in that, zero change. And the implications, this was, this was again, a request from some of the folks in the, in the board to what would be the effect. So, right out of the gate, making no change with those factors associated would be an eight cent increase or a 5.49% increase on the tax rate. So, again, I think that provides some, some clarity to some of the, the challenges that we have. Questions?
I mean, basically, to summarize that, it's approximately 50% of the change in this proposed budget is due to state rate variables.
That's correct.
Is that act? Is that accurate?
Just, just under 50, a little less than 50, yes.
I'm just ballparking that?
Yes.
Yeah, and I think that certainly validates with what you're saying there. So, anyway, that's out of the gate. We're going to continue on and share with you some more, we'll move along a little bit quicker here.
In the, the budget, we wanted to show you the higher level, just four categories of expenditures, and, and people here, I think, know what local revenues are. It's everything other than the draw from the Ed Fund and property taxes. The, the, the total spending, 44, 44 million, 944, is, is a number that drives the draw from the Ed Fund. Our local revenues are down half a percent, and I know last week, I was a little more optimistic on what was coming in from the federal IDEA and from the state for special education, and we got those numbers yesterday, and they were less. And Dan made a comment last, last meeting that he was wondering about that, and he was right. So, our revenues are not as, they're, they're down about $250,000 from what we, we thought last time. And.
And what's the biggest driver of that, John?
It's our service plan for special education, and the services needed delineated there. And we have more, more kids with IEPs, but less total costs. Our, our share of the ID, of the special ed money from the state actually is down 1.7%. And there's a, a table we, we received yesterday where other districts nearby are up 9% and 17%.
But it sounds like this is a reflection of our students' needs?
Yes, it is.
So, it's not so much that?
It is a big service plan.
I mean, revenue is down consistent with student needs. Is that accurate?
That's right.
We do have some, I mean, I think as John alluded to, we do have some, a desire to just look at that a little bit more deeply. Again, as John indicated, we just got it, and we're doing some kind of comparable looking, but not wanting to say it's wrong, but we, we need to dive into it a little bit more.
And we'll dig into each category now, a little bit deeper.
So, this is kind of the 30,000-foot level, and then we'll, as John said, we'll look.
And what we were just talking about, the IDEA money is down 18 and a half percent. And the Medicaid amount, the claims that we, we process and refunds we receive are independent of that state funding formula. That's our effort and our, our mix of claims. So, we're, that's one area we don't anticipate to go down. And the title funds, I always ask Stuart, is it true that we do not know what's going to happen with those till May? So, our guidance from Bill Talbot and, and from the state has been to lower that by five and a half percent, so five and a half or six percent. The next category, state funds of special education, and the mainstream block grant is down a little bit, and that's, that's reflective of our, the needs of the students that are involved there. And also, the intensive reimbursement, that's up to the 50% reimbursement that we get from special ed, that's down. There are other categories that are either level or up a little bit, but you can see that the two biggest ones are down. The rest of the state funds, transportation is down a little bit because we've had turnover in, in the bus garage, and we have, we were bus drivers. I say bus garage, I mean, our bus drivers, not the garage. And so, our reimbursable expenses there are less. We get about 48% of our total cost of transportation back from the state, so that's down a little bit. And the vocational transportation and field tax refunds are pretty, pretty constant usually. The last page shows what you could call as local, local funds. Interest income. Interest income on our sweep account is down for two reasons. One, our cash balance is down, we don't have that big fund balance we had three or four years ago. And two, the rates are still very low, and I'm not, I don't know how to predict that up any higher, so. The city payment, we sat down with the city and updated that, like we're supposed to do every year. And so, we have 11% increase coming back from the city. And our tuition is school choice. Last meeting, we had a chart on that, that hasn't changed.
So, this is a combination of tuition and school choice?
Yes, that's one number. And what we had, in our previous meeting, we had all the categories-
And the changes in the school choice, not in the so-called tuition students?
Right, the tuition students is up a little bit. We're at our next, at the next board meeting, we'll have a recommendation for announced tuition. So, that'll be something, we'll get to you as soon as, probably January 2nd or 3rd there, so. Our carryover number is still the number I had in August. We don't have a verification from the auditors. When they were here, they thought it might be a little higher, but I don't have the audit yet, so.
This is based on what you believe it to be?
Right, our year-end report, preliminary report. So, the local revenues, as we saw before, are down about half a percent. This still has some relevance, the data itself is in your packet, but just the graph, I'm not gonna talk about federal stimulus funds, because they've been gone for a couple of years now. But our local funds, meaning our impact fees and the, let's see, the school choice tuition, that kind of thing are down. And our federal and IDEA funds are trending down more dramatically than I knew about two weeks ago, so. This just kind of puts graphically into what's happening with some of our revenues. This isn't all of them, but key revenues that we have.
The net impact on revenue, John, I mean, I've got that, the decline of half a percent is about 40 grand, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, order of magnitude on our budget, it's pretty insignificant.
Right.
I think it's more, you know, kind of in the long-term, you know, the trend.
Right.
And, you know, taking that out forwardly is a financial kind of concern that we have.
It's similar to the Ed Fund, there's no unexpected or even expected increase to look for. So, we just have to kind of keep that flat, knowing it's gonna be flat. This is the detail of expenditures. And I have some notes, and we'll talk about these. If you have any questions, let me know, I know I'm going through this. We don't have teacher contracts settled, but we do know, at a point in time, if steps were paid, the teacher increase has to do with steps and some changes in staffing that we put through this year. We proposed, anyway, so that's why that's up 1.91%. Co-curricular salaries are based on who's in the mix and what the pay scale will be. So, it's 3% increase, but it's not very much money at this point. Administrators, we have one retirement, and so, that's only up 0.3% because we put steps in there, too.
Can I ask something about teachers? This is actually probably, bones in the head, to one of your last pages as well, but I figured it's a good place to ask about this. This year, I know that we had three one-year teachers at the elementary schools, right? So, this does not include those three teachers?
It does, it does. The updated budget in 2014 is the final budget with those teachers in it.
Okay, so, the, so I noticed that there were requests for an additional teacher for first grade at Central School. It looks like that is in, there was a request for a teacher at Orchard. It looks like that was, that's not in this budget. So, but I just want to understand, it still seems to me that we should be talking about the fact that those were three, I mean, those three additional teachers last year, the board approved for being just for that one year. So, it seems that it would be fair to be saying that those three teachers are, you know, they're being renewed, and that should really be pointed out.
Yeah, that's true on the process, I mean, they're, those particular individuals are in a one-year-only position. And so, those positions will have to be reposted, depending on what we then do with the budget, right?
Right.
Whether they're needed or not.
Right now, this one additional teacher for grade one is in addition to continuing to have four kindergarten teachers. Okay, I just want to understand that.
I think what Martin's saying is that it should be recognized as, really, what you're saying is four new positions.
Right.
With three of them being renewed from one year.
Essentially, I mean, I think that that would be technically correct, because-
Or no, from the previous, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because they're carrying over from the previous year when they were hired specifically, understanding that it was one year. I mean, you know, in reality, the class size, that cohort for kindergarten that required that additional teacher, you know, that cohort's not getting smaller, and presumably, an additional teacher would be needed for the next grade, like first grade. But it's probably premature to understand whether we need four teachers in kindergarten.
When we get to that, when you see the last page, you'll see kind of the ratios, assumptions, and some of that plays in, some of that plays into that a little bit as well, around some of the decision-
Oh, okay, I hadn't seen, I hadn't got it.
Some of the decision-making around, you know, around those numbers.
Yeah, okay.
Good question. Let's see, supervisors, there's a slight increase in there, and there was a position that we have where there's been some, there's been a need to have a little bit extra supervision in there, so, in the transportation area, so that's why that's up a little bit. That's an operational decision. Administrative and support positions shows up at 9%, but we had a position, our technical assistant, David, you know, who was misclassified, so we put this in here, and that contributes to a 9% increase.
So, it's really reclassification?
Yes.
So, did something go down that offsets that?
It's, it was in teachers, actually, misclassified as a teacher.
So, the net, the net increase in teachers would not only be steps and recommend new positions, it would be the downside associated with this reclassification?
Yes, there's, yeah. I think the one area that's, we have more paraprofessionals than we did due to general pairs, and it's the same thing that Martin was asking about, we had general paraprofessionals added, they're still in here, and some more special ed paraprofessionals.
That seems to be a little inconsistent with the opening comments that there were less special ed needs.
Right, but remember, that's the service plan, and the service plan in part has a connection to the staffing, but it's about the service plan and then, you know, costs associated. So, you can have a slight downward, that's how you fund it. And so, you know, the year-round service, those types of things are factored into that. That service plan, it's much, I mean, the service plan is the broad need, and then, how you're gonna carry out that need, and sometimes, those components change within. In this particular case, even though there's an increase, the service plan is going down slightly.
But what I heard, though, was that the pool of students requiring services-
But the level of intensity of each of those students can vary. From one year, you know, from one year to the next, you can have variability with a student that factors into the service plan. So, there could be, you know, a high-cost student, and that cohort changes. And so, that can vary the service plan. Does that make sense to people, I'm still seeing it a little cloudy?
It's still a little cloudy to me, but I think we can get into the, I mean, at the end of the day, it's gotta be supported by a need, so I'm sure we'll address that.
And again, I think as we said on the service plan, there is, there is a need to ask some deeper questions based on some of the information, which is true of all of the things that we get from the state, but that one particularly just has a, we have a question mark on it, right, yeah?
Substitutes for paraprofessionals and for teachers, the trend has been paraprofessional substitutes. There's more paraprofessionals, and there's more need to cover their, cover their sick time, et cetera. So, that's what that is. And same with teachers.
So, John, or David, the board charged the administration last year with a 10% decrease in substitutes. So, where is that reflected?
Again, you're not seeing it here.
And part of this is the reality of what's going on with our cohort of staff. And so, we have put forth some ideas around how to keep that down, or even look at, you know, more innovative ways. And again, part of this is, you know, the cohort group, both teachers and paraprofessionals are changing. And so, it's a reality, and again, it's still something we're trying to figure out how to better manage.
So, there has been no decrease in the use of subs?
Again, we can look at this current year, which was the charge. Again, this is kind of looking forwardly about our current staff and the need. Again, our hope is to try to bring this down in a variety of ways around being healthier, you know?
Right, I do think we need to make a note that we should be reported back to on this particular year, since that was the charge.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's not just the long-term of being healthier, it's making sure that the administration is, one, enforcing our policies to make sure that there is no abuse. And I'm not suggesting there is, but I also don't get the feeling, from what I hear, that there is any concerted effort to make sure there is no abuse. And if the administration thinks that we don't have the tools because of contract language or whatnot, to really put teeth behind making sure there is not abuse, that we add tougher language into, or put it forth in the- Those are kind of the two things that I personally was hoping to prompt by what the board did as far as decreasing-
No, I think the board prompt has been right, and there's been a charge where, you know, by contract, we have the ability to, you know, ask questions specifically about when people are out. And again, those have been enacted, what I would say more stringently. But sometimes, when there are valid reasons, it's hard to say, you can't do that. And so, again, I can go into some more detail, short for you on that. But again, I'd love to be able to just say, make it happen. Again, part of that is also very contingent upon our population and the situations out there, so.
And I think, you know, this discussion is good, but what the board was looking for was consistent with the district's ends, which are really more consistent and reliable. Direct instruction time is of value to students, and we know that, so.
Agreed. Yeah, I don't disagree with that, again, trying to manage that. Kathy?
Hi, I just wanted to ask, how many days are the teachers allowed?
There are 26 sick days.
Twenty-six sick days, 26. Well, if you give them 26 days, well, that's gonna be very expensive.
What we know, though, is that people don't use all of those days, and so, we have some trending.
Well, I understand that, but why are they allowed 26 days?
Part of also the negotiated agreements, we have collective bargaining agreements for, in this case, teachers, administrators, support staff, et cetera.
I'm sorry, but there are, you know, I mean, and I understand family flexibility and whatever, but it's better to be flexible than to allow 26 days, seems astronomical, with two months off, and all this breaks in between, who in the public sector can afford that? I think that that is a big, big thing. I mean, if we want to control the substitute budget, well, that's where we start.
Well, I mean, a couple of things. For the contract for staff, we actually reduced, but there was a trade-off. We reduced the sick leave by five days, but there was a trade-off for one flexible personal day.
This past negotiation?
This past negotiation, the contract that is for the current year. And I don't think that we've, that's affected the average amount of sick days that staff is taking. The point is, the average in the amount of sick days is far less, I don't remember what the number was, but it was consistent with what you would see in normal employment situations, six, seven days, or something like that. I don't remember exactly what it was, but it was around that number. So, yeah, it's a huge number, but, you know, I have to keep on reiterating that that's not being used. And we're not paying it off at the end, it's not accumulated where we have to pay it off.
Well, I understand that, but this still allows a lot of room. I mean, if it's not used, and that's common practice or whatever, then why not make that the number? I guess I don't understand the, I don't understand the reason for that cushion.
Yeah, well, I think, well, first of all, it's a term that's in the contract right now, so it is what it is. And as Martin said, and I think David has, you know, implied as well, it's a benefit that's not being abused right now. There may be selected examples where administrators need to pay more attention to that on an individual basis, but it's not being abused right now. More importantly, we look at, if you look at the substitute lines, the paraprofessional substitute teachers and long-term substitutes, we really want to look at those numbers and say, how can we manage those down so that our students are benefiting from consistent direct instruction with their assigned teachers?
I understand that, I just think one is a correlation to the other. If you cannot, if you don't accept one, then the other will not be met.
Yeah, I think we've asked David and the administration to really dig into that, Kathy. And that's some of where the 10% reduction goal came from last year. It was a way to start directionally, looking at managing that, managing that number, and understanding what was behind it, and where there may be some opportunities to improve that.
Right, and a key point, I think, as well, is in collective bargaining, if we want to take 10 days of sick leave back, we would have to give something up for that in a negotiation. It's not just gonna be given back. And the point is, we would get no benefit from that, or minimal benefit from that, because, again, it's not gonna ultimately, it probably won't affect the average or significantly affect that average that we're seeing, because most teachers are not taking, you know, their maximum. You know, by far, most teachers are staying up.
The average is very low. Again, I think, to move us along, I think we're hearing your comment, Kathy. Again, part of the charge in the board is, this is a lot of money. But again, we have a lot of employees, and we do want to make sure that the people who are in front of our kids are healthy. We want to make sure that's happening, so that instruction is good. That said, we want the teachers and staff in front of them that we have hired. And so, again, that's part of the charge that the board has given me, and I'm working on trying to make that happen in a more efficient way, so. Okay. Anything else, John, that you want to highlight?
Oh, building security. We have a position at the library entrance that's in this budget. We've been staffing that since the beginning of the year, and-
I think the important thing to note, though, this is a shared cost. I mean, as we talked about the city, you saw that on a couple earlier slides, and that's part of the increase to the city. And that, again, this is a community library, and so, the city, the collaboration that we've had with the city around that, sharing some of these expenses, again, it's a reality of safety and security, so.
Can I ask a question about that, just because I've gotten a lot of questions about that position, since that person sits there? So, have you looked into options about that being like a swipe of the card for kids to get back into school?
We have. It's more expensive and more difficult to manage than that. Number one, students wearing the cards, egress, fire exit, both for community and for students, it becomes problematic. And so, again, we've done kind of a cost-benefit analysis of all these options. And at the present time, we have a shared cost with the city, this is the way in which we're doing it. We do think about other things that the individual, while they wait there to do that work, what are some other things that could be happening? So, again, we're asking, it's not an ideal situation, and I think this does point to the conversation that's currently going on with the city around the community library existence, so.
Okay, and to employee benefits, health insurance, we're with the VHI Blue Cross Blue Shield Plan, and the stated rating, the approved rate increases 4.5%. That's here. We have had some changes in coverage, more, there's been a few new employees, so, it's gone up- So it's gone up because of that and, and some, some switches in coverage as people's family situations changed. So that's, that's why it's a little bit higher than four and a half percent. Life insurance, we went out to bid last year and lined up our coverage with what is in contracts. And so that's why that's up almost 30%. The administrator retirement, there are two people in the budget who get that benefit. It's a retirement benefit in the South Burlington Administrators Association budget, contract, I mean. And there were two people in, in the current year too, so it's, it's up by 2%. Employee retirement, we've basically level funded that, but it shows a seven, six and a half percent decrease because we, in the budget, we're reflecting contributions from the Nutrition Services Department and also Schools Out, which we had budgeted in the general fund before. So it's getting the budget tighter to reflect that the, the funds are coming from retirement and, or from nutritional services. Workers' comp is up because of our experience over time. And dental insurance, we've, that's one area that has been pretty constant and, so there's no increase there. The tuition reimbursement is all, all categories, but right now there's $102,000 in there for teachers, which was negotiated and the difference being $29,000 for all other employee groups. And disability insurance is tied with life when we went out for bid on that, so it's up, it's up almost 10%. Purchase services is a big category, covers a lot of, of all departments, schools, et cetera. It's up a little, well, it's up two and a half percent. We, we have some mentoring that increased the cost that we'll talk about when we get to that sheet, but that's, that's a good part of this, two and a half percent. Things like benefit plan, administration, legal services, negotiations, audit, they're pretty, pretty flat. There's not much increase there. And the one area in purchased technical services is in preschool expenses. And that's up, we've increased that by $50,000. That's covered by ADM through the tax rate, so we are getting that money from the, from the state of Vermont, but...
For our kids that are in the preschool program with 10 hours or more, and we do get a 0.46 of an ADM, or average daily membership allotment. And so part of that is to make sure we're doing some good work around our, our preschool partners and making sure they're adhering to the things that they need to be doing. Again, important, you know, important for us to be paying attention to.
I think the next category is purchase property services. And plant repair services is a, is one area where we'll talk about in a little bit. That's down 100 and, almost $110,000. It has to do with how we want, what we're going to propose for some bigger projects and how we would fund it. So we'll get back to that one. Property insurance is up almost 10%.
Kathy, you have a question?
I'm sorry, I do, because I wasn't fully paying attention when you were talking about the preschool. That used to be a wash. Essentially, we were reimbursed by the state, were we not?
Well, first of all, we get money for students that participate in a 10-hour program. So we get, and this is, this is fairly new, again, five years or so new, that we get, we, we are provided average daily membership. We get money, a draw from the Ed Fund, we are able to get money that way. And so important though, that that has to be very specifically directed back to our preschool partners. And so that's what that is. And so we're adding more, we add more partners, we add more preschool partners. That's an important part of making sure that kids are ready. It's again, part of that, that initiative. And so this, again, we're bringing in a lot of revenue and we can, we can obviously indicate that very specifically. And you'll see it on the offset.
Right, okay, that's good. Well, that's my answer. Still a wash. Sorry.
Well, it's actually, yeah, it's, it's more than a wash. We bring, we bring in a lot of money and, and that's, this is attributed to that specific.
In, in the liability insurance, we now have cyber liability insurance that's in, helping to increase that, that amount that's there. So I don't know exactly how much that is, but I know that that's one of the factors that's increased our insurance costs. Next category is other purchase services. The, the, really the only line that's, I mean, there's a 23% line in printing. That has to do with the timeliness of billing from the city on, on our budget books. So with the new, new setup and new personnel, they're, they're billing us currently. It had been, it had been placed in miscellaneous revenue because we had to pay some back year. So that's why it shows up there, but it's a, it's an expense we share with the city on the budget books. Let's see, the 610s, total supplies and materials, 50610 is something worth noting. Our program supplies, last year we, we cut, the budget included 25% less funds for the schools to operate for their programs. And we've maintained that 25% cut. We have not increased the cut and increased the budgets either, there's $3,000 from a miscellaneous department. But we've held that constant and talked with building administrators about what they need. And it's, it's harder for them to do with what they have, but they are. So we've maintained that cut there. There's slight increases in electricity due to rates, gas, just because we, we did experience some really warm winters and we're prepared to not have that this year and, or next year, I mean. And every other year we produce or purchase fuel oil as a backup for this high school and the middle school. It's a nominal amount, but we need to keep the tanks with, with some, some volume there so we can use it in case and test it. So that's what the $8,000 is.
That's part of our rate, our rate determination that we're interruptible. So if they need us to go on to that, we can, we can burn oil versus gas for that period of time of interruptible. So our, our rate, we get a rate benefit that way.
Right. Next category is computers. We have a little table later on, but small equipment's pretty flat. Computers, there are, there's an addition for one-to-one at the 12th grade. There's, we did not fund any computers, I'm sorry, a nominal amount of computers at the K5s last year. So there's kind of catching up there. And we haven't, the sixth grade here at the middle school doesn't have really any computers to use next year unless we make a purchase. We're, the labs are pretty much going away. We do have some units that are six years old, that kind of thing, but, so, but we'll have a table that shows what this is next. And 50740's equipment, and what's in there is our buses, and we have three buses that are, we're going to buy. We're going to lease purchase them, so the net cost goes into this line, that's primarily what's the changes there. The next category is, there are two things here that, note the contingency is, we have a lot of things, a lot of liabilities out there that, that we need to plan for or at least have some funds available for. The nutrition service deficit is, is one of those. The, the maintaining the pension could be one. Our, our maintenance, our big projects, we're, we may need to use some of this money. Our contract negotiations and ACA, Affordable Care Act. We had a presentation just a couple of days ago that showed that with some of the changes, we, actuarially, we may see some more people get family care from a person who works here who's losing family care in the private sector. So it's just something we have to be aware of and that's one reason that there's this contingency. Program evaluation is, there's $45,000 in that line. And that has to do with Common Core, and maybe Stuart can help me with this one.
Well, it's, the big piece is basically math materials K8. And I reported that when I did the math report a few months ago. You know, as we look at changing program and especially at the middle school, I think more than anywhere else, is this question of, we're going to have to provide some materials for teachers to be able to teach the standards that are going to be tested next spring. And while we are making do with supplements and other materials in the long run, you know, there's got to be money to do math program. So that's mostly what that is. There would probably be some small amount for literacy, you know, ELA program, but the majority would be math.
So, I'm sorry, so the whole, the whole cost of a new math program is within here now?
No, this is one year of doing it. If we were to do all of it at once, you know, we'd be talking in the hundreds. And so the hope is to make it, you know, a reasonable bound over a two or three-year period.
Thanks.
I think the other thing is, we, we would like a little wait and see as things roll out in, in program. I mean, part of the adoption and...
We're looking at E programs as well, though, you know, from the main publishers, there's really not a, a cut on that, you know? They still want to make the same profit that they made as if they were giving you paper. But we're working on it.
Finally, last category is debt service, the existing bond.
Can you back up for a second? The transferring out to food service, is that to deal with the deficit?
Oh, yes, sorry, I didn't see that.
And, I, do we, I mean, I look at that right away and having seen that we're actually now in the, in the black on nutrition services, do we need to?
Calm that down, you mean?
We still have a deficit that one.
Well, yeah, there's a deficit, but I think that what we found out was that we don't, well, there's different opinions. I, I buy into Rich's opinion. Well, especially I buy into it now that we have the trend which will, if the trend continues, will wipe that deficit away. So why do we in a particularly difficult budget year?
I think we need more than six months to determine what the trend is.
Well, it's a three-month, it's a, it's a four-month trend. But it is a trend. So I mean, you know, I mean, I, I, that's the one that jumps out most obviously to me is in a particularly tough budget year that...
Well, I think we're trying to be mindful of, you know, kind of our financial liabilities and risks now and into the future. And part of that is some good strong stewardship around our work and...
Well, I agree with that, but I mean, that, but if we, if we have a trend where, and it, I'd be premature, yeah, I grant. Let's assume that in fact they, this continues and, and they are able to make $50,000 this year or whatever, 15, 20,000. Why throw $125,000 just to get this deficit down where we have an opinion, not, not just from Rich, but from legal counsel, that we don't have to do that, particularly if we...
We have an opinion from our auditors that we should do that though, so.
So what I might suggest is one, again, good comment. I mean, we're going to have an, the board is going to have opportunities to give feedback around what might be some suggested areas. That sounds like maybe that's one that you may want to nudge us, maybe to have something different than that. Again, that's maybe, maybe you, Martin, but maybe the rest of the board may weigh in on that. I don't know. But we hear you. I think we're trying, we're trying to be, you know, mindful of, of the directions that we've had to date from the board, so. Okay. So again, John, we're back to the same, the 467, that's Mary's, what we started out with.
So if I do a quick summary here, and John, I'm sorry, I've got my back to you.
It's okay.
Of the 2 million that's built into this 2015 preliminary budget recommendation, I've got 50% of it in salary and benefits, 25% of it in this contingency number under other miscellaneous, and 25% in all other.
That's about right, yes.
That's kind of about where things fall. So when I'm thinking about the board kind of going back and discussing either specific line items or materiality of some direction we may want to give David and his team, those are the bu, those are the buckets we're talking about at a, at a 10,000-foot level.
Can you repeat this?
Can you say that again?
Yeah, 50% is in salary and benefits. 25% is in the contingency under other miscellaneous, which John kind of covered some of the, the issues we've got there. And then 25% is in all other. Which means a lot of little line items.
Yeah.
But that's, I mean, yeah, that's looking at where the increases, increases are. But, but, all right. If we have to, maybe I'm getting ahead of where, where you're heading, but I mean, if, if we have to have a zero budget, and I, I would suggest right off the bat that for purposes of understanding what that means, you should tell us what would happen if we had zero increase. How would we possibly?
Are you using zero, the state?
The state, saying that we keep it, yeah, so it's still eight cents in that scenario. But, but, you know, I look and I say, well, here's, there's a, here's a million that we can save. We just aren't going to have any more computers. Yeah, I mean, any laptops. Yeah, I mean, I, I want to understand, you know, what would happen to our program. I mean, I'm not suggesting, I wouldn't want to go there, but you know, if, if we do put this budget before the public and they voted down, we may have to be going there and making these decisions. So we might as well have those decisions upfront for the public to see. You know, the things, you know, if we have to go to what the state suggests, which is, you know, holding, well, I don't even know if they've suggested necessarily holding it at zero level or at level increase. But, but by virtue of the fact that with, they're already foisting eight cents additional taxes on us, even at a level, I mean, that's kind of seems to be what they're telling us. But I mean, yeah, it's like, it's, how many teachers do we have to riff? I mean, do we not have the laptop program anymore? You know, do we, do we not have any raises for any of our staff or teachers or whatnot? You know, which parts do we have any kind of control over? And maybe we don't, I don't know, do, are we tied in? Are we unable to say we're not going to have laptops anymore? Or, or do we have an obligation? I assume we don't have an obligation.
We have lease agreements currently out there, so.
But what's the penalty?
Or new leases, I mean, you have a, you have an opportunity to not continue, right?
You're, you're really asking is really what, what would administration do? What would be the triage list, which would be pretty draconian to get to, basically to net out. It's really $2 million, right?
Yeah, and I was just looking at a couple of places where I could easily quickly add up to $2 million. Absolutely no increases on, on salary and getting rid of the laptops. But the, the other question I would have is it, is it even worth going the next step of what would it take to not have any tax increase? You know, in other words, cutting not just the $2 million, but cutting from our last year's budget. You know, cutting it down to whatever it would take.
What's the incremental dollars you're talking about there?
And I'm doing this for purposes of our, of our, well, of our discussion and our communication.
If it was half, it's going to be roughly another $2 million.
You're, you're saying offset the state.
So it's 4 million?
Yeah, offset the state. I mean, just, I, I think we owe that, I mean, not to ourselves and to the public to say, you know, if you wanted no tax increases, this is the, what happens to your public education in South Burlington. I don't know if that's worth having them go through that exercise or not, but I just raised that as a...
I think you're right on. I think that's begged for. What happens if we're flat? I think the only comment I would make is that should it be a flat budget or should it be a flat per-student expenditure on the gross level? Which I personally favor because it factors in the efficiency of delivery of everything. In other words, you would take the gross spending, the 42, 43, 44, whatever it is, and divide it by the total number of students, including the tuition students and including the school choice, the net school choice, what we end up. Because it takes all that money to educate all those students. Look at what happens year to year and, and go from that as a flat base and go forward. But one of those two, I think, needs to get looked at. It's either the, what, what incrementally justifies additional money from a flat... It's either the, what incrementally justifies additional money from a flat budget or from a flat per student budget?
Do we have any per pupil spending information here?
We do, we have it on the, we have it on the, we have it on the, on our opening slide, the per pupil spending.
Yeah, but it's, it's, that's computed on the net, and it's computed on the net and it only uses the equivalent students, so, you know, I think, I think it costs us money to educate school choice people, I think it costs us money to educate the tuition people. And so I'm simply offering that a better measure is to divide the gross number by the, by the, by the number of students, and presumably, all things being equal, that rate if it was the same from year to year, you'd deliver the same product per student. Now, it's not really quite true, because if you try to drop it down to zero, it doesn't completely fall down, it's not totally like, but I think it, in the range we're talking about, it's as a good approximation as you're likely to come up with.
And I get the general concept, you know, what's hard in this business is that it's not necessarily transferable from year to year, I mean, we have different student needs, they change. We have ELL populations that change, and so, you know, again, we have significant behavior increases that require us to do, you know, so it's, we're definitely seeing some significant uptick, and so it's hard to hold the metric.
But also taking the prior year's budget and blindly using it the next year is also begs some questions.
But we aren't really doing that, Dan, I mean, part of it was like a service plan is that we have to very specifically articulate what it is we're going to provide. There are some unknowns, you know, with our, with our current population, and it is difficult. I, I'm going to tell you that it's difficult for us to say, you know, we're going, we're going to hold the line here, and then you have, you know, situations that begin to happen. And again, as I've talked about with the bookend discussion, and where we are with business partnerships, ships, and high schools, and dual enrollment is part of the efficiencies that I think is, is a must. Again, we're, that, that conversation is in fast movement, but right now, I can't tell you that I'm recognizing efficiencies right now.
We haven't gotten to that chart yet, and we'll get to it, I guess, here in a bit, but there's no question, but over the last 10 years, there's been a huge change in the rate of change of the cost of education, and that needs to be justified, okay?
And again, I, I, we can, we can go back on what's happening over time around the readiness, right? Student readiness into our system and the requirements to help them through the system is, is quite a story. And so, when you, when you examine that a little bit more-
It may be part of the justification, but it's not just in this district, it's happening every place, okay?
Exactly right, exactly right. And, and it's transferable to a lot of different other measures, incarceration rates, and, you know, a variety of things that, you know, I think are really important for us as a society to look at around what's happening around kind of the human service cost. Again, we'll, we'll go on, I, it, it's a concern, I mean, I continue to struggle with, how can we, we can't do this, we can't continue to have these types of increases, and certainly when you look at the state side, it's very troubling.
David, I, I liked the exercise that, that Martin has proposed. What would our schools look like without any tax increase? What, what do we stand to lose? What would happen?
Sure. Again, we, I can do that, again, when, when you do, as Elizabeth alluded to around increases or of our total budget, you know, we're, obviously, we're highly driven based on staff, and so it's going to be highly driven decision on staff reduction. And so, I mean, that's just, that's, that, you're going to see, you're going to see the effect on that.
Class sizes are likely-
Absolutely.
But I think that paints a picture.
Yeah, no, I, I get it.
You can make more meaning out of that if you actually go through the exercise and say, this is what it would look like, this is what would happen.
But you would also have to seriously consider whether the one-to-one could continue as well, I mean, I think that's another big chunk of money that's out there as well.
So class sizes come up to a certain amount, and then you dip into other areas the best you can, and if those are exhausted, then you go back to other, other staffing, you know?
And just, you know, I agree with, with Dan as far as understanding the information that, that you laid out, but I think for purposes of the, the budget discussion and going to the taxpayer, I think that perhaps a clearer message that doesn't get any of these difficulties that David was talking about is to say that, all right, to keep it at zero tax increase, this is what happens to your school, to, to go to what, you know, level funded, this is what, what we're foregoing, and this is what we think it should be. Now, on the what we think it should be, I think there's tinkering that can be done, I've already given you $125,000 that, that we could take out of the budget. But, but, I mean, there may be other little things along those lines to do on that one, but, but I think for purposes, but I think that, that's very important information to understand as well, but little harder to communicate.
Well, I think, I think what Dan is asking can be done in the context of we, we know what our actual student, you know, as you said, our minds, we know the minds that are coming to the district, so we can, we can actually go back historically and kind of come up with that number.
Right.
And, and then do a forward projection, so I, I could, I do agree, looking at, are we being more efficient in what we're delivering? Because I know in the time I've served on the board, what I often don't see is, are we eliminating or reducing in order to redeploy funding to other areas that would benefit our students? And it seems like we hang on to everything-
Yeah.
And add to it. And there, there were some areas where there obviously are some reductions here, so I don't want to make that a wholesale comment. But honestly, in anticipation, David, that this may be the first time, and I, I just saw the budget, like eight years, the budget wouldn't pass, we're going to have to be prepared with-
To do some different things.
A Plan B regardless, so I, I think, already, I think you can, you and John should take that away as direction.
Yeah, we pretty much anticipated that this, you know, this is a tough, this is a really tough situation we're in, so. Okay. Other questions? We're going to come back to the discussion on the bonds, as we said earlier, but move on. So what you see here, again, part of our dialogue, again, before, we have all the figures with the administrators, you know, around our continued efforts to make the schools meet the needs of students, where are we? How are we doing with the cohort migration of students? What are some of the needs identified? What are the, some of the, we know mandates and Common Core, what are some of the things that we feel that we're in need of to support the student, the school action plans? And so, what you see here, and I'm not going to read through all of these, is obviously whether they're in or not, and so, some additional, for the example, I'm not going to go through, but this one being one, administrative assistance support over at Chamberlain, there's one person there, so there's some added hours in there to provide that. And you see some, some things obviously that are in, one additional teacher, Rick Marcot, we're going to talk about this one when I get to the, to the matrix a little bit more around why that, it's basically a placeholder at this point.
So can you tell us in, is your choice to put it in?
Yes, in the budget, in the budget.
Yeah, okay.
So you can say in the budget, right. Currently, again, a, a larger one, I'm, again, you see a lot of the no's here at the high school, some requests for increase in enrollment as a result for math, no, and then in 504 coordination, we see a significant uptick going in at the high school with coordinating 504 related issues, and so that's currently in right now. And again, these others, again, you can, I think, fairly explanatory. This one here, again, John alluded to a little bit around the mentoring piece, again, the expansion of our mentoring program, I think, is, has been a really, really important part for our students feeling connected. Again, this adds some money, we started this out as a grant opportunity, and now we're embedding it into the budget, and so that's part of the, part of that.
So that's in addition to our current program?
Well, our current program has been grant funded.
Right.
And we're picking up those costs as a result and expanding it to all schools in our mentoring, our current mentoring program.
Does, does that mean Howard Center's not going to be involved in funding it anymore?
Well, Howard Center was part of the grantor-
Right.
That allowed us to begin the process, and then-
Well, the person that was right, I mean, was being paid from Howard Center.
Yep, so we're picking that cost up, that's part of the, the process of grant, of the grant, is that we, you know, we pick that up. Again, those are the, those are the implications of grants that a lot of, you know, what we have to be mindful of and watchful of, but that's part, that's what that is. And then the others are, are no's. Okay? So moving along, looking at our, our history here, and John, you can walk through them on this. Well, this is, this is obviously a lot higher than, it's been our interesting, I mean, 2008, our total gross expenditures went up 7.21, but it was under the old charter limit. And I, I didn't have a chance to go back to this very same meeting last year, but we, we brought similar numbers to you last year at the same time with some similar direction probably back. So it, it's, it's not a, it's not a rosy outlook.
Well, yeah.
What's the 214 LEG, what does that mean?
After, last year, when we passed the budget-
Oh, yeah.
The expenditures went up 2.09, but we thought it was going to be an 11 cent tax increase, and it wound up being a 10 and, 10 and a half.
So just a little history, can you tell, remind me what happened in 2007?
The vote failed, this was around the charter change, language, right?
Oh, right, right, right.
It was starting to happen.
There was a superintendent change.
Yes.
There was property revaluation in the city where people knew their properties were going to be revalued, but they didn't know what the tax implication was. They knew what their new assessed value was, but the rate hadn't come out yet, so there was, I think it was more of a-
High level of uncertainty.
High level of uncertainty, I'm worried things were going in general, and not, not an issue of, of school expenditures per se.
Thanks.
So I give you the next one, and it's a little hard to see this, but, you know, just, this obviously is more historical trend data around enrollment, back to 99, and so, I mean, I think important as you look at the migration, and the one that is easier is more colored, but you see what happens if you take the cohort through. Looking currently, you know, at the actual and then the predicted, kindergarten often is a real question mark. Again, this does factor in the Bill Smith work, and he just has re-upped this, and so he looked at where his predictions were for the past year and marries those up, puts them into his model, and then, and then we-
As I continually have this difficulty, this measure is minds, not equivalent minds?
That's correct, these are, these are minds, right? Not equivalent minds, yeah. I'll have to get used to that one.
You're going to change the whole lingo, Dan.
Yeah.
I mean, it drives me crazy trying to understand-
Equalized or pupils or not.
It's going to be an equalized mind.
Yeah.
Equivalent mind, equalized mind.
So, you know, I think, I mean, for me, you know, some of the, some of the information around the minds and the numbers of our children, you know, in this very bottom category, I mean, I think it is somewhat telling that, you know, we are a district that, you know, we have seen decreases, but by and by, our partners around the state have seen far more significant decreases than what we're seeing. And so, while our equalized has some, some pieces, we're actually in a, in a positive place around our, our population, migration and continuation of program. So I think the other thing is, as you look across them, in other words, you take this particular 12th grade and where they were as 11th graders, you know, in previous years, you know, as they track back, you know, we have positive trend data there that, that students are adding to them, right? And part of that is our choice program has, was, and also our, our tuition students as well.
So David, on the actual, were these the numbers that the staffing decisions were made on, or was, is there another?
Well, except for the kindergarten, and you'll, you'll see the kindergarten piece, again, I, that's, that's still kind of wishy-washy, that most of the numbers, the numbers that we have in there, I believe, are from Bill around his prediction, but what I know is that it's volatile because of the choice under the no child left behind issue, we have had outmigration from Orchard and from Chamberlain as a result of that, so that's part of my rationale around the, the teacher at Rick Marcot and not, and we'll, we'll look at that a little bit more and just-
Wasn't that a two-year thing, though?
Well, we have one more year, that will be one more year of that.
Okay.
So if you go to the next one, and this next sheet's really kind of hard, and, well, it's actually easier, harder to read on your sheet. So this is just, just correlates, so numbers of students, teachers, and this shows then the average. Again, we're looking at the current year, what we have, 64 students in four, so again, you can, you can track that. This is Central School, so what, what's currently here right now is we, I've added a teacher, and is that right, John? We added a teacher into the K? That doesn't seem right. I think we add a teacher in, for four here, which, it should be four here, which drops that down to a lower number.
This looks like a first grade, maybe.
Yeah, hang on a second.
Well, the fourth grade, first grade looks like a migration of kindergarten.
Yeah, so 53-
No one seems to be in grade five.
So 53, but it would be four, and it would be a plus one, is that coming out?
Yeah, you know what? Just translate it into the sliding correctly.
Right.
So we have to look at the small chart.
So, yeah, on your chart, on you is, is an added one there, and that, that is an add one. And so it drops that kindergarten number down to 13.3 instead of 17. Are you following me? Put four there, estimated at 53, that goes to 13.
That's 17.7.
Not 17.7. And my rationale for that is that you're going to see when we get to Orchard and, and Chamberlain, that those kindergarten class sizes are large based on the expected number, and so we'll talk more about that in just a second. So, anyway, we'll go on to, to Chamberlain. And so Chamberlain, right now, again, I guess, but this is the 44, and at two, although I'm keeping that there because I do believe there's going to be migration out of there as a result of what we saw last year, and, from both schools. So, again, the 22-
Are you thinking there's still going to be migration from Chamberlain and/or Orchard?
Yes.
Yes.
But won't Central fail AYP next year?
Two more years, I think, isn't it?
Even if they did, I mean, if everybody fails AYP, in other words, if you actually lift the bar, they still have two years before it takes an effect. So this would be year one, they would still be a school of choice.
I'm going to ask these.
I, I thought it was going to go into effect next year, and I didn't think it was so much around the bar as it was the cohort of students, because they were like two students away from-
They keep adjusting that bar, which is part of, you know, every year it's closer to 100% all.
But it goes higher.
Right.
Right.
So eventually everyone's going to fail, because one of-
I thought you had to fail three years in a row.
Yes, right, so-
Before you have the choice.
First year you're identified, then you become a school in need of improvement and a school in need of improvement, so.
We haven't failed yet, is that right?
Nobody's failed, where schools in need of improvement.
But I mean, is Central in need of improvement?
Central has not been in improvement, they have never even, so unless these test results that come back in February, and nobody has said whether the bar is actually going to raise even without a waiver, right? I mean, the law says it is, but nobody's clear, can't get a clear answer. If the cut didn't raise based on past experience, we wouldn't believe that Central would be identified.
Okay.
Again, but even if they were, they would still be a school of choice for next year. And based on our experience, it's kindergarten more than any other-
That moves.
Place that out migrates because the kids have no experience in the school, and so it's based on-
And what we're, what we continue to be clear about is that when that no longer exists, and they've got, you know, a child who comes along three or four years later, then that doesn't exist, so that's part of the complexity of this particular-
For second, for second family members is what you mean.
Right, and so we really want to be clear with the mom and dad and guardian when they make those decisions around, oh, I want to go to Central, but what will happen four years when they're, when another child comes along? If that, you know?
Yeah.
But if they're all identified, then it's different, right? So.
And the law says that they-
Yeah.
Can stay.
So, a quick question. So for Central, there's going to be up to four fifth grade teachers next year? Is that what?
No.
Yeah. So, John, can you just go back one, just go P.
Well, that's where the error is, that, that should say three.
That should say three, and the other, and it should be more for-
Yeah, on this chart, I, I don't know that you have this one, actually. This should have copied the same way, I don't know why it didn't do that, maybe when we copied it into the formula. So that's three, it's again, plus one there is correct.
So, how many, how many, during the school year, how many new kids have we gotten, have transferred into South Burlington? Has there been significant numbers?
I have, again, we have, I have that available, real time, every day I can look at, kind I have, again, we have, I have that available, real time, every day I can look at kind of.
I was just, I was just curious, because I, I'd heard, because I, I'm over at Central on a weekly basis and I understood that.
New students coming.
That new students coming to South Burlington are pretty much all choosing to go to Central School. Because, you know, if you come to South Burlington, you look on the web, it's kind of the obvious school to go to, even though Chamberlain and Orchard are perfectly fine, but from a distance, you can't tell that.
I can, we've.
So I'm just kind of curious, if we expect that trend to continue?
I'll give you, just generally, I don't have the exact numbers, I can tell you that. Central has seen definitely the most significant, so we've seen the, the most significant change of new students coming in. But it, both Chamberlain and Orchard have had new students as well. Definitely the highest percent Central, followed equally by Chamberlain and, again, for new students, although hasn't been significant in affecting their class size. All right, so moving on, again, to Orchard and again, here at Orchard, you see, this is also, John. Yeah, so if you, in Orchard, there is a minus one here for Orchard. And so there's three across the board right now, which puts their kindergarten class at nineteen, if that's three, it puts them at nineteen. And so that, that to me is a concern, but part of what I'm going to propose to the administrators is that we look at, you know, how this will, how this will shuffle out as we move along. We know that is, first of all, we don't know exactly who are going to be the registrants. Number two, we don't know who necessarily will, will want to choose Central School. And so that's the variability that I'm walking into this current budget with, with, with this particular situation. So the class sizes at Orchard, then, you know, across the board are, are in the twenties is an average with that nineteen at kindergarten, which is one that we'll watch.
Can I ask you a question, Stuart, you brought this up, that I was under the impression that the first year a, a school doesn't pass AYP, families could choose another school?
No, it, it was in the second year. In other words, the first year, you're, you're kind of put on notice.
Okay.
In the second year that they don't pass AYP, that was two years ago for Orchard and Chamberlain. Then at that point, parents can choose, if they're in a Title One school, which both those schools are, they can choose a school choice if a school exists within the district, which we have.
So even though the school wouldn't realize anything until year three, the families can opt out in year two.
That's right.
So we have at least one more year.
At least.
Right.
Before the second.
At least, depending on what happens with.
Right.
You know, waivers, there's a lot of questions, obviously, up in the year still.
And I'll assume if, if a school passes, then the clock starts again?
Well, it, it still takes two years, even, even so. So for example, not that it has relationship to school choice, but last year, the high school made AYP, even though the year before they did not. There's still, still, still a school in need of improvement until that happens again this year.
Okay, so that's a two-year cycle.
Two, two years during your way out.
Right.
So anyway, well, I'll, I'll send you the update, when this got copied into this PowerPoint, it must have changed them, so. Again, that's the rationale and that brings in Orchard to, you know, or the district average across, you know, at this point, then K five, we're in that, we're in the eighteen point eight number, close to the twenty.
So do you have, for kindergarten, that being seemingly the wild card here. So you have four teachers at Central, two at Chamberlain and four, or is it three?
Three at Orchard.
At Orchard is three, right, it's, so it's three and the fifth is seven and the third is nineteen.
I mean, if things go awry and you need an extra teacher somewhere in kindergarten, in other words, you, not all these kids are moving from Orchard to Central. And I, is that included in the contingency that you?
There is some money in contingency, but again, I think as we continue the dialogue and the budget process, you know, we, we may want to talk about some of these things. I think the other part is instead of a wait and see, we can do a push, we can do a push to inform around choice options so that we can help as opposed to looking at all three schools having kindergarten situations, maybe it could be one.
What's the date by which we did that last year?
As far as what day?
Where they had to determine.
I forget what date I.
It was in April and related to right after kindergarten registrations and I think, I, I believe it was about May first that you had to make a decision by.
It's so early, I mean, and again, the, the new, the new prediction models, again, you know, that, that Bill has had and again, he's really quite accurate, but, you know, that's what the numbers we're using for kindergarten, it's still volatile. And particularly volatile now with, with knowing what the, you know, what the choice option will bring. Okay.
David, a quick question, the three positions that were one-year only are included in your numbers on this?
Minus one essentially on there, right, so.
Oh, not the charts, but what's, what's in the packet, so those positions are?
Well, yes, the positions are in, the people, and when we say one-year are, are not, they, they were issued one-year contracts. If there's an available contract, they'd have to reapply to a position through the process, yeah.
But the position is in here.
Correct.
When you say, like, I think Chamberlain was one, like, a third grade?
Mm-hmm, well, they split, so we added, it was a split between K and three.
K and three, okay.
We added one, one, one person to go between the two.
What, what was, was Central kindergarten, was that one of them?
Yes.
Okay, so like, next year for four first grade teachers, that position is in that four.
Correct. Kathy?
It's just slightly unrelated, but somewhat related. I'm just curious about the high school, you know, the, the failing of the school. Does that affect how colleges look at our students, do you think? I'm kind of curious.
Colleges, I mean, first of all, they're looking at the, you know, I think they look at the high schools around the country and they look at, you know, how they're doing. I think they're very knowledgeable what's going on, most colleges are knowledgeable about what AYP and under no child left behind has done or the metrics that are there. But more importantly, I think they're looking at individual student outcomes, they're looking at individual student performances and kind of the dispositions of those students. And again, you know, I think that's, that's probably the most important component that they're looking at. Okay, moving on, John, you're on for this one.
Well, we, there's a choice here, to go with the total, which that's what this is, so. Our total teacher and student computer equipment is what's shown here from two thousand twelve to projected through two thousand twenty. This, we, we, there's a, another five to ten thousand dollars for computers for offices that don't show up here, but that's why it's student and teacher computer equipment. So the, the yellow line two thousand fifteen shows what's in the budget for one-to-one costs, three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Computers for grades K to five, ninety-nine thousand dollars. Computers for grade six, twenty-five thousand dollars and contingency of twenty thousand dollars. The contingency is going to be, could be used for a number of things, but our projectors that were bought five years ago are failing. And rather than wholesale pull them out and just replace them all, we need to have a, a little bank in there to replace them as they go. So that's primarily what the twenty thousand would be. It would also be costs associated with one-to-one storage and security in the summer, that kind of thing, but, so that's the, the total. And the trend line shows where we were in two thousand twelve and how this kind of is the peak year because we're adding that twelfth grade. And last year, we, during our budget cuts, told the kindergarten through fives that we would use the computers another year. And so we deferred about fifty or sixty thousand dollars to this year, so that's why that number's higher than what it's going to be going forward.
So is the, is the three hundred and thirty-four just the cost of adding the student computers to one grade level?
No, 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 that's the total, seven through twelve costs, the next slide will show one-to-one.
Okay.
Here's the next slide. The existing lease commitments, Martin asked where would be if we stopped? In two thousand fifteen, we would owe two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And we do owe that because we've made commitments for four years on these leases.
We can't just send back the laptops and say, oh, we're done.
So wait one second, is that, is that two, two seventy-two of the four seventy-nine on the previous page?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Well, Martin, that's a serious question, for a lease, you, it's an operating lease, you don't have to fund it.
Right.
You can send it back.
You can actually add it.
Right.
Can I?
I, I, I mean, the consequences of that are we lease buses and.
People might not.
Yeah, we're, we're having a tough time getting a lease. And, but, you know, it is, that's, that's why it's set up for non-appropriation clauses. It's more, well, I won't go into that. Projected costs of expanding to the twelfth grade are shown in two thousand fifteen, so the new cost there is a sixty-two thousand dollars for the twelfth grade computers, for teachers and the twelfth graders that don't have them. We have a, we have, interestingly, we have thirty kids projected more in grade nine next year than we had this year. There's a big eighth grade going to the, to the ninth grade, so they're already counted, but there's a, a big class at Georgia School District that we project, I think the guidance office, thirty-five percent of that class coming. So we, we, we may get ten more kids from Georgia. I'm, I don't know, that's a decision that kids and parents make a lot of times at the last minute, but.
We get a good.
We know it's there.
But not until the very, usually the first few days.
So that's the, that's the number of.
No, that does, that, this does let you, you know, take out, obviously, you know, the expansion.
Yeah, thank you.
We did, I, we've, we've cut it, we've cut the projector number down, we had another plan to do projectors, but we're not going to do that because that's one area that seemed a little excessive, so we have the contingency in there for that.
All right, so we're going to move on to the, the bond, I think that's next, is that John?
Right, and there's a, you don't have it yet, Meg, Meg could pass it out, but there's a, there's a three-page explanation with some, some accompanying words that go with this slide. So I don't expect you to look at it, you don't have it yet, but it's, it will provide some background as to how we could, what the needs are and why.
So let's, let's kind of just back up, those of you who know, two thousand and six was, was a bond that went out and we went out for a bond of two million dollars. And that bond obviously never came to fruition to, to serve the building of an administrative building and the expansion of the cafeteria. So it went into kind of, we put it into hibernation, if you will, so it pays it off. And so this particular plan that John's going to walk you through provides a request to the board to reactivate the bond pending voter approval to be able to use it towards facility-specific related needs. And so, John?
The premise is, or at least I view it, that we can continue to do all our facility work, repair work through the operating budget. We cut that budget quite a bit in the current year, but we've done it according to needs and we, when we deferred our roof, we've been pretty upfront about doing that. But given the state funding mechanism, for us to put half a million dollars into operating budget for repairs to our facilities isn't practical. All the paving we did, you know, over three years was half a million dollars, that's, that would add to the problem. So we, we know that there's a, a bond issue, a one million six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of principal that's in the bank earning interest, so taxpayers don't have to, it's not in the budget right now. So that's over here, if you look at the current budget in two thousand fourteen, it, it, we didn't budget anything for that bond issue, even though there were payments made because it was made from that, that savings. The current bu- budget, the two thousand fourteen bond total was five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And in the, next to the last column, we budgeted three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars for facility repair, the roofs and that kind of thing this year. So the total we budgeted for debt service and facility, facility repair was nine hundred and thirty-three thousand nine sixteen. That's where we are right now. We have some needs identified and we'll get back to those, of quite a bit, quite a bit of work for elevators and that kind of thing. But the proposal specifically is to go to the voters, asking to use the remaining bond funds from two thousand five for specific purposes. And then we know what the debt service would be, two hundred and nine thousand dollars, that's the first component. Second component is we know what the bond payments are on the ninety-five, ninety-six bonds, four hundred and sixty-six, or four hundred and fifty-six, sixty-six, sorry, thousand dollars. And we have, we know that there are small projects that need to be done on an ongoing basis, that two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars is a hundred thousand dollars less than what we did in the fourteen year. And includes a hundred thousand dollars of contingency for projects that we need to have done. So spending the same amount of money in fifteen versus fourteen increases debt service on the fourteen, fifteen side, but it provides two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars that we can do small projects. It provides one million six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to do some projects that we think need to be done.
And that was, and then we can go back to that list of some of, of how we came up to the.
And, and I'll go to the last one first. Last week, we had the list of projects that we could, it wasn't, it wasn't the, it wasn't a wish list, but things we need to be done, but have done, but maybe not this year. So I worked with facilities to pare that down to a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, twenty-three dollars of projects plus contingency of a hundred thousand dollars. So that's what we would do next year with, with the money from the, from the operating budget. In addition, the, the ADA report and things that we've, we know have been happening with elevators and being able to get to second floor on both, in both the middle school and the high school, they're very expensive. And given these, the, the funding we have in front of us, we would never be able to do them. So the first one is a middle, middle school elevator and the number there is a hard number of what it would cost to put an elevator in the front lobby up to the second floor, a new elevator under, that meets all the standards, current standards.
Just a quick, quick, maybe not be the appropriate time for it, but wouldn't it make sense to have a new elevator elsewhere and keep the old elevators a backup, or is that what you're thinking?
That actually would be, would be true, we would, we would, the, the problem is this is really the right location to do the, to do the elevator based on ADA recommendations?
But David, I think, that's what we're planning on doing.
Oh, yeah, oh, okay.
It would be a different location in front.
Oh, okay.
We just received that estimate on Friday, so. It would be a different location, but the current elevator would be the backup.
Right.
The high school elevators is, I think we talked about it last meeting, but it's, it has difficulties. And we have a lift in the, in the back of the high school by the, it takes from the first floor to the gym and the art wing that needs to be upgraded and that would be the backup. Our high school bathrooms are not ADA compliant and are, and are in need of some serious repair. And we have two roofs that we have, you know, estimates on, we still would bid them out, obviously, that are ready to go. And we have two roofs that we have, you know, estimates on, we still would bid them out, obviously, that are ready to go. The, the last thing that's a major project is windows at the high school, and we, that was a project that was deferred five years ago. The estimate then for the holes, the whole building was $270,000, so I don't know what it is yet. And some of these projects, obviously the, not obviously, but the high school elevator is a soft number. I don't know. We just got the ADA report. But we do have needs that we could, if we released, got those funds from the 2006 bond release, we could use the money.
John, help me understand how this goes financially. This money we have...
Yes.
...in the bank sits there. Did we borrow that on the basis of having the bond? Is that what we did?
We did. I'll go through it. 2005, there was a proposal to have an administration building right here in, in front of the middle school on Dorset Street. And actually, a, a bond vote went to the voters and passed. There was also, it was also to...
Upgrade the cafeteria.
Upgrade the cafeteria, the kitchen area in the high school. Not being here, I, I know that some of the circumstances were that there wasn't enough matching funds from the state available, so the project never...
So, the net, but the net is, and based on the, the voters passing the bond, we borrowed the money, and we're leaving it in the, we're leaving it there, investing it, and it's paying its own way from an interest charge standpoint?
It is. After three years, that's supposed to all be used. If it's not, it has to be invested at a rate slightly less than what we pay the bondholders. And so, we're all complying with IRS regulations.
So, the result of that is that while the taxpayers voted for that bond, they've never been billed for that bond?
Right, except at the beginning, when the project had some legs, but there was, there's a few costs there, but yes.
So, if they're billed for it, what is the, what is the net effect to that?
If they're billed for it now, not built in 2014, the taxes, this would be in the operating budget as a debt service payment.
Okay.
Our bond payment here went down $70,000, about $100,000, because these bonds are almost paid off. And our operating budget is reduced from last year's level to this number, so that the amount that's in the budget for debt service and for our major repairs or repairs is the same.
But all of this is in the current proposed budget, correct?
Yes.
So, the debt, the debt service is in the 17 cents and...
Right.
And what, what portion of the, of the 17 cents is the, represents this?
This is even. This is, there's no increase between debt service and...
So, there's no, this, when I'm looking at the 11.7 or 8.8% and 17.86 cents, there's no impact of the bond?
The only impact on the bond and our savings here is the, the fact that it costs money, more money from the state. You know, a penny is worth less from the state, but the, the actual expenditure of funds is the same amount.
Well, if, I mean, if what Dan's asking is, we borrowed the money with voter approval?
Yes.
So, how does the, as we start to spend it, assuming the voters would approve these projects?
We have to have, we have to go to the, we have to get a resolution passed by the board and a, a bond, an issue on the vote that goes through the clerk's office. It has to have a legal opinion. And the bond bank issues the bonds for us, they're, they're 100%, well, they've encouraged us to do this for a number of years. But we haven't had needs to say, hey, let's take $1.5 million out of it and use it. But these, these needs listed are bigger than what we could afford.
I think we also haven't had a, so we haven't had a long enough history of a, of our stewardship plan and some of those things.
Well, I'm still not getting how, how does the community pay it back?
Still, I'm going to the bottom line, and that is, what I'm expecting is that there's a new line item on the tax bill that calls, that's called school bond repayment.
Well, it is.
No different than the 95.
And it's in addition to the tax, to the tax.
It is. I mean, it's 675,893. I didn't know I did that, but...
You touched the smart board.
Yeah, I'm not. Well, I did that thing there. It, it is. It, it'll be in the debt service line.
But it's over, it's over and above the, the tax rate, right?
Right.
It's a separate line item on it.
It is, but if you look at, no, it's not over and above. I'm not going to say that, because it's, because we are cutting the repair line in the operating budget for facilities by an amount that gets it down lower.
Isn't that already in this budget? Didn't you already assume that in here?
Yeah.
Okay, so now we've got to pay for the bond?
Yes, and you're going to pay less from the current budget for repairs.
Oh, so he's saying it's a wash, right?
Well, yeah.
You're saying it's a wash.
Well, I don't understand it that way quite yet. I understand why he's, where he would like me to go, but I'm not ready to go there yet, because...
I know what you're saying.
I think that incrementally less expense is already shown in the budget that gave us the 11% increase in the tax rate.
Well, I agree.
So, you still have to pay for the bond after that, as far as where I'm at. So, I think there's another line item that has to go on after, if that, if that bond vote gets passed, it has to go on.
Maybe that's the question. Assume the bond vote gets passed, what will a taxpayer see?
I'll show you.
Okay, good.
I have to get to it, though.
Glad you asked it in a straightforward way. You seem to understand my dilemma.
Oh, I get it.
Okay, see, on account 50430.
Plant repair services?
Yeah.
Do I have that? Do we have that?
Yeah, you do.
Yep.
It's on your thing. You can go to the number.
So, that dropped about $100,000?
Right.
To lower that?
Yes. And debt service, which is the last line...
Got it?
Increased $100,000.
Debt service.
Oh, okay, so, no.
So, will this...
So, it'll still be within the operating budget?
Right.
But will each year, will, will the taxpayers see...
Separate line?
A line item that's principal on bonds that looks like 560?
No, here's, here's what they'll see. On this, this chart here, if you look at fiscal '16, the number will be 643.
So, that goes up from the 560, then?
In '14, but, but the budget for facility needs is constant, so that if you look at this number where we, that we spent in 2014, it's $933,000. That's the same amount we spent from these two different areas for a long time. And our debt service would go to under $92,000 in '18, just, just would have the 2005 budget, or bond, reflected.
But what we're really saying is, over that, I, what is that, 10 years or, I'm ballparking, yeah, 10 years, the taxpayers cannot expect any reduction in total debt and facility budget?
Well, they could. Now, the $741,000 in 2018, that's where there's a lot of flexibility. We could set up a reserve, or reduce, reduce, or do a new bond issue because there's other needs come along. That's, I think that's the one point that I haven't talked about, but the 96 bond is on the verge of going away. I mean, it's two more years of, of big payments, and then in '17 it goes down, and then we're done with it.
Yeah, it just doesn't make, maybe I'm with you, Dan. It doesn't make intuitive sense to me that the voters authorized a bond issue in 2006. The school borrowed the money, didn't spend it, it sat in the bank. We, we're using the bond interest to pay the expenses of owning the bond, but once we start spending it, somebody's going to owe the lender for what we borrowed on that bond. And I understand the first year, we've kind of netted it out because we, we pay debt service on that, or we pay interest on that bond, right?
We do.
But I don't understand how that loan isn't going to directly translate back to a taxpayer.
To increase tax, or have a tax impact.
Right.
Well, I guess there's another way of, to confuse it even more. I mean, if, if we had to this year or over the next three years, pay for all those things that we saw listed and essentially pay for that by drawing money from the state ed fund, you know, for every dollar that we want to draw from there, you know, we're actually getting 98 cents, you know, the, the, if that made sense. But, but if we use the bond, we get to use a whole dollar. Does that, because the dollar, the dollar that we get from the state is not the dollar, I mean, well, a different way of putting it. For every dollar we get from the state, our taxpayer has had to pay a dollar, two cents to the state. I don't know if that's the exact number. John probably would, would know, but we pay more to the state than we get back. So, let's use the bond money and use that extra, because, because we get to use every dollar.
If it would decrement the tax down, I can understand that if it would decrement, decrement the tax down, and a new line item appeared, there was a fixed line item every year because it was the budget, it was the bond.
Right.
I could understand, but I'm not understanding it the way it's set up.
We would, we would be three lines, then. It'd be the bond.
She's spreading the news out for 10 years.
This would be a new line, debt service, debt service, and then this line is lower, so...
So, so the budgeted debt service line would be what Dan is referring to, to pay off the bond?
I think the...
We'd have $110,000.
Reason I'd like to see it as a separate line, I think, is that it's, it'll stay fixed for 10 years. If it goes up into the operating budget, we're subject to whatever the state decides the tax rate's going to be.
It already is in the operating budget. This debt service that we have here, then...
I know it has been, and we've been, and it's been subject to the whims of the state on what, where things are going.
So, logistics, we've got to probably have a couple of questions here. One is, logistically, if, I mean, this is going to be a separate vote on the ballot anyway, but from a, from an accounting standpoint, is it something we can get as a separate line item on the tax bill, so it isn't subject to the state variables? And I think, I think some of this has to, I guess, I thought you were going, Martin, a different place with this question, which is, these are all needs, so if the school had to fund the, if the district had to fund these out of our operating budget, how would we have managed this?
Right.
Yeah, that's where I was going.
Exactly. Well, we would, we would have had to request maybe going out for a bond, you know, not using this one, go out for, you know, a bond, borrow money to be ADA compliant, or to get, prioritize those that are most critical.
Right.
You know, and so, I mean, that's, I think, in part and play, what we've been working hard to identify, that the discrepancies in our building and needs.
So, if I, so if I step back, and one thing we've sold routinely with our constituency is, is that we've had a 20-year stewardship plan, facility stewardship plan. So, where have all these things been relative to the stewardship plan?
Well, first of all, we've rescheduled the stewardship plan several times. We have, we've redistributed them as we, as they became known, and we populated the 20-year stewardship plan. Many things would have been front-loaded, and we kind of prioritized those beyond their useful life and said, let's put it here, and we reorganized. And so, things are catching up to us, one. The other thing is we've also had other identified issues around ADA compliance, new rules that have come out. As a result of the new rules, we go out and have to do the assessment, and we have exposures, you know, some of which you've seen.
Were the elevators in the 20-year plan, for instance?
The maintenance of the elevator was.
But not, not to that extent?
ADA compliance based on the size and all of that.
The ADA compliance, that was passed in 2010 and didn't become codified till 2011 or early 2012, and we did the study this year, so those are, that's new.
So, a lot of those costs are not, and they are new.
The first three, really. I mean, we've, the, the, the high school bathrooms, if we look at, if we look at the, the study, the ADA study, we've identified the elevators and the bathrooms as being the top two priorities, and the auditorium as the third, but it's not up here because we have roofs to take care of, which are in the plan, and the windows, which were deferred from the plan, so...
That, that's helpful information to know that, that those are recent and due to code changes and wouldn't have shown up in the stewardship plan, except for a component of maintenance.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, sorry, John.
The, the, the report we have there, the ADA report from Tim Duff, his introduction, a couple of pages tell a lot about the, how the ADA works and what our responsibilities are. But we've had these troubles with the elevators, and I don't know, I'm not going to go into what's, the high schools isn't much better than the middle schools.
Well, yeah, and the, and the solution and the fix to that, to that building is far more complicated than this building based on the multiple floors, half floors, half steps, half, you know, and the complexity of that building. You can't really, the only place, the reason that that's so much higher is it's, it's a redesign of the current shaft that's already there, or the space, or, you know, we have to make that particular space ADA compliant versus the others building that was actually easier or less, or less expensive.
So, just, I mean, maybe it's a dumb question, but would it be cheaper to, to just get a new bond and let this other bond go away as it's going away? Are the interest rates somehow different now?
Interesting, this bond, the bond bank is going to refund it, do a refunding for a lower interest rate, like refinance a mortgage. So, so actually, it's, it's slated to actually be lower than the schedule that's there, the interest. So, significantly, I don't know how much, but they don't do a refunding unless there's significant...
But if we went out and got a new bond, I mean, is, is, would it be more, would it be beneficial to us?
I, I don't know.
Right. Well, we should probably find that out. I mean, if this bond's just paying for itself, I mean...
And give it cheaper.
It would actually be less confusing, perhaps, to ask...
I know, and I, I realize that the, the middle school elevator, it took us, we commissioned Doran Whittier to look at that for what's the best location and what's the best solution. That all took two months, so it's not like we have that for the high school elevator or the bathrooms. We're, we're doing some guesswork here, so it's...
Could be.
And I'm, I'm concerned about that, because...
Well, that's, I mean, you're more about the...
My, my question's more...
About the financing.
Yeah, the financing, is that we should make sure that it is less expensive just using the bond we already have as opposed to getting a new bond.
Sure. I get it. The bond bank, I'll, I'll talk to them about that.
Okay, I know you're, everybody's getting puked out when the numbers exhaust the numbers. So, I, I think, John, I think that concluded. I don't think there's anything else that we wanted to at this point highlight, did we? So, the board obviously has, we have some work to do, and we also provide you with the staff listing, you know, the, at your place, just kind of our current staffing, both administrative support staff and teaching staff. And again, I think at this point, there's a lot of information with you at this point.
We do have one question, David, before you leave this. You know, I really understand what's going on, I think, with the information you had with the elementary schools, but I'm at a total loss as to what the teachers are happening and the...
Middle and high.
Middle and high school? And what's happening there with class sizes and all that stuff?
Yep. I have the same information. Again, it, it gets more complicated to explain it.
I, yeah, I'm sure it does.
Because of, you know, but again, the class sizes, programs being offered, and the occupancy levels.
It'd be nice to understand how it is you go about planning the staffing for that, and whether we really can...
Yep, not a problem. I'm happy to provide that.
Partly is, partly in anticipation of, to discussion about what the price is going to be for holding the budget level, or however we decide to do that analysis.
So, another...
You've already, we're already way off on the timing here.
We'll just name Julie on a...
Elizabeth, Julie raised this the other day, as far as our advocacy to the state regarding that eight, the eight-cent hit that we're going to take without doing anything. And we've been very good citizens the last five years as far as keeping our budgets down. And I really think that we should be more proactive in advocating that we shouldn't have to be taking this kind of a hit. And, you know, there's some solutions that the state should be looking more seriously at, such as not continuing to decrease the transfer from the general fund over to the education fund. It's gone down like three or four percentage points over the last four or five years as far as lower amount coming from the general fund over to the education fund. There's other things that are being funded through the general fund, such as, this is something I learned at the, the School Board Association meeting, a healthcare benefit for retirees that is, now, my understanding is taking $30 million from the... Um, a healthcare benefit for retirees that is, now, my understanding is taking thirty million dollars from the, from the general fund. It started out a number of years ago and was not a big money factor, but it was a benefit that was provided that is fairly significant. And I'm sure there could be other things. Well, the pension, I mean, how much money is going to the pension, uh, the teacher's pension. All these things directly affect the general fund, which now we're seeing is, is affecting our taxes on property. Uh, because less money's coming from the general fund over to the education fund. And I think we need to send a letter, talk to senators, uh, and, and raise these concerns. I'm not sure how the.
Well, we were talking about, you know, it seems like Tim Ash is the head of some of the most relevant, right? Isn't that what you said?
He's doing a lot of work on, my understanding, on.
Maybe we need to chat with him.
Well, part of this is, could be the legislative advocacy that, you know, we're trying to set up, and it may be individuals, it may be, you know, a whole group. And this is one of the charges that Kevin and I are trying to pull together with the communication that we've had with Pam and Elizabeth around. And the, and these things can be added, but, you know, here are the implications, what's going on?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, I'm thinking.
Yeah, I think, I think what Martin's saying is, we, as, as a board and, and as South Burlington as a community, you know, we've always taken a leadership role. And what I'm hearing is an interest in, uh, a more assertive advocacy, not independent of the legislative breakfast that's scheduled for January sixth.
Frankly, independent of the city, because this is really a school issue.
It is a school issue. Um, well, to that end, um, I wonder if, you know, if, Martin, you have a particular interest, if you'd be willing to work maybe with me to draft.
Yeah.
Maybe a letter, but maybe to deliver that?
Yeah, no, I'd be happy to do that, it's not until I get back.
And we can, we can identify the right audience, but I think we should, I, if Tim Ash is the right start point, anyway, that might be worth setting up some time with him directly. And sitting down and talking about what we're seeing.
And I think one of, one of the things you could do, and we should evoke the VSBA perhaps to say, we, we would like some, uh, support in this particular area. Again, it can turn into, you know, a, a bill process that then continues on, but maybe, you know, having their support in the same, you know, again, putting a letter together, having their support. And making sure that, that it gets to the correct recipients, you know, uh, could be really important. Again, I know that they're, they're often there in, uh, meeting in the legislature and recognize who might be best, uh, served that, that information, so.
Well, and I think, you know, addressing the person who, you know, kind of is responsible for that, but I think also letting our own legislators know. You know, like copying, if you develop a letter.
Before it goes out, sure.
Copying it to them, because they should be aware of what's happening as well, even if they're not on the education committee, they should know what the implications are.
I think Ash's role is the, um, finance chair on the Senate.
Well, we can get the right target audience, but I think, I, I do agree, I think that's appropriate.
Our representatives don't happen to be on any of those financial or ways and means committees.
Right, but I still think they should know what's happening in our community.
They just don't happen to be on the committees, and unfortunately, all the legislation gets developed in the committees, and then turned over to the body to vote up or down sometimes. Sometimes it ever makes it.
I mean, I think the, I mean, we're, I think, I agree, we've been the leaders around these issues, and we should remain that. We know that the implications are, are wide and far across the state right now.
Right, and I think that, uh, we could, um, for some of the specifics, as far as solutions that we may want to be lobbying for. Steve Dale would probably be helpful, because these are issues that they're dealing with. But, but, yeah, I'm happy to help, I probably won't have until the first week of January, just because I'm gonna be out of town.
Maybe I can get a draft going before then.
Yeah, okay.
So, I, I have for follow-up on the budget conversation, really, the next go-round, we should be looking at a, um, discussion of level funding the budget, and what the impact would be. Um, a further discussion of class sizes and programs, both K through five in the middle school and high school. Uh, bond, bond financing, um, alternative, if that's appropriate, um, and then state advocacy. And was there, was there anything else that was on our follow-up list?
There's a question of whether we should have administration look at a scenario where we have no tax increase. In other words, trying to reduce it because of the eight cent tax. I don't think we have to do that.
Or zero, you, you want, no, no, instead of level funding and zero tax.
Zero tax, which means another.
Well, maybe we could at least calculate what the dollar impact, how much dollar impact it would have to be.
How we would approach.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to go, I don't, I wouldn't do it.
I would just like to have an idea of, like, what, what would our schools have to do without, if we, you know.
We'll, we'll see that as a level funding.
That'll probably be scary enough.
Because that gives me a clear picture, I think.
Yep, okay.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you. Thanks, David, thanks, Joan. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Ten. We're not too late on administrative reports, fifth grade.
Yes, okay, so, I want to let you know, again, this is a, this is a big topic for me. Um, I want to let you know what I've done to date. This is specific to moving, uh, transitioning our current fifth grade, which is currently housed at each of the three elementary schools. Uh, to be located in the middle school for a five through eight middle school configuration. And this would not occur until the school year fifteen, sixteen, so this current group of third grade students that are in our elementary schools would be the ones that would be affected. And so, um, the desire to do this is heavily rooted in improved or increased opportunities for students. Fifth grade students, by coming over here, would be afforded some additional opportunities, as well as some structural changes that would also occur at the middle school. In addition, the repurposing of space would be available to the elementary schools to be looking at expanded learning opportunities and expanded early childhood services as well. Um, so, the opportunities here, I think, are, are, um, significant across the board. Specific opportunities at the middle school, by the students being here, currently, we send our students, our, our fifth grade students, when they are, are done, we send them as sixth graders, as independents over here to the middle school. And what I'll say, um, an individual arm, and they don't have the opportunity to have a similar situation with a seven, eight looping model. When you look at that, you may say that's not significant, but the students who travel don't often have somebody that they can more developmentally communicate with and connect with, mentor, mentee with, um, is a concern. When we look at activities that are important to students, about having, you know, what do we do with a social? It, it, it's not really appropriate for sixth graders to go to the socials, there really needs to be more of an activity-based, an opportunity. When I look at integrated arts, we've been trying for years to, to bring back what we had way back around world languages, um, music opportunities. We've not been able to do that, and currently, as you see, the configurations of our budget and our budget trends, that's not something that I see we're, we're gonna be able to do in the near future. By bringing them over here, it is a much more efficient process, because it's a, it's a whole group here, and we get away from, you know, the, the fifty students in, in a school. And how do you divide that up, right? It can, can, uh, much more efficient when it's consolidated. Uh, the opportunity to continue to, our, our unfolding of some of the more specific, uh, needs around common core and our academic needs can be, um, better focused in that way as well. Integrated arts, I think, is a, is a question around how we could make that happen, uh, what I would say, um, expanded. When I think of, again, about the music and the choral, those types of things can be increased as well. So, um, I have had the opportunity to meet with all four and inform five, the high school, all three elementary schools, staff and teachers, the middle school I did this morning. And the high school through correspondence, uh, from, a note from me, uh, to Patrick and Patrick to his staff about, uh, the current, uh, desire to move fifth grade. Um, I've told them that I, I have not shared it specifically with the board, and that that would be happening tonight. I did want to give them the heads up before that happened. Um, I did say that, you know, the final authority obviously rests with the board, the board evaluates me, and if they don't like my decisions, then they can take the necessary actions to say, we don't want to do that. What this outlines is, again, a rough outline of opportunities, and there are concerns that I have. But the opportunities far outweigh the concerns at the onset. Moving forward, my recommendation is to establish a committee that would evaluate and recommend, recognize other opportunities, as well as other concerns. And to, through the process of a better part of a year, work through this, uh, to identify, um, the way in which that would happen. Again, we have a variety of things that need to, need to happen. We have spaces that need to be evaluated, this very space that we have. What needs to happen, what needs to migrate from the middle, the elementary schools over here for just library-related needs? What are the spaces that are needed? Again, I know there are space, there's space available. It does have us moving out of this location, our offices, either repurposing back into one of the elementary schools or another location, again, part of the city conversation. So, um, I do this, you know, because I, I do really believe that it's an opportunity for our students in their best interest. I recognize that it's difficult, change is difficult for teachers and staff, um, and for moms and dads and guardians around this process, but I think it is, again, the right thing to do. Let me pause and, and just answer some of your, your questions.
It's not really a question, it's a, I want to throw this out there for, as we're going down the road and considering what you're proposing on this, and what the board's role, I think, should be, particularly in policy governance. I mean, you're gonna be bringing us a proposed decision, it's your decision.
Correct.
And, and the way we should evaluate it is not whether we necessarily agree with it or not, but was it a rational, well-reasoned decision based on evidence? And, and your call, I mean, it's your judgment call. I don't want to get into a judgment call of whether this is right or wrong. I want to make sure that you have provided the appropriate record for whatever your decision is, your appropriate rationales and, and reasonable explanations. And, uh, you're gonna need a lot more than this, I think, and, and some of, some of the discussions, some of the things you just mentioned, which weren't really in here, I think are really gonna need to be fleshed out. You know, I look at this and I, you know, I believe this model's a best practice according to current research. You know, there's gonna have to be a lot more there, I think, for us to say, yeah, that, that's great. And, and that would be my main, you know, what, what your decision is, to me, you know, whether I think it's.
Good, bad, or indifferent, right?
Yeah, so that's kind of really what I would emphasize, is that the explanation really needs to be, you know, for something that could be very controversial for many people, really has to be fleshed out.
So, let me be clear, again, you evaluate me, and so, that, that's within your purview. I'm wanting to, part of the, one of the executive limitations that you don't be surprised by, significant changes in, in the school, right, or in a, in the district. And so, I believe this is an important component, otherwise, if I just went out and did it and never told you, that would be a significant violation. That said, you know, the process by which I'm going through right now, that they are moving, is, is my current position with, with them. And that we're gonna move forward in this diligent way of establishing a committee and recognizing the opportunities and working through the concerns. I believe that it's a very doable, and in some ways, you know, a cost-neutral opportunity, while at the same time being able to expand, you know, what I would believe, uh, healthy situations for students, so.
So, cost-neutral, um, you, you would come to us then with a financial report about the costs?
Well, part of that is gonna be the future year, where this is not the, this is not in this budget. Um, but the future year, there could be some, just to bring them over and to do the things that we feel are important, one, and expand, uh, let's just say, the integrated arts, the opportunity to participate in world languages, maybe a no net cost. To do some other things, but in order to do them, uh, without moving the students, would have been far more expensive, right? So, this, this offers a much more efficient way to, to work on that.
So, you're gonna have a financial projection with this report?
Part of that would be the need for the budget, all right, so we, we have to bring students into the, into the space, what would that cost? We have to, you know, do we have the lockers? Yes, we do, you know, we already have a lot of the, the structural things that we need currently. We already currently have, are servicing them by teachers, right? Those teachers, yes, would have to move, or they would have to be repurposed here, that's not a net, that's not an increase. So, there, there are some, there are some things that need to be worked out, um, in that particular budget. But in general, as you know, we have a situation at Orchard where we have fifty students, fifty-one, fifty-two students, right? And we have a lot of issues and concerns around that class size. Currently, I, I think it's twenty-seven, actually, twenty, twenty-seven or twenty-eight kids in that class. When you take the numbers and put them into the middle school, you know, an eight teacher staff, not nine, an eight teacher staff generally can serve that population quite well, right? And, again, those are some of the things that I, I feel, um, from the financial piece, make it work, from an efficiency of consolidating. But then also about the opportunity to do what I think is really important in that rounding out a five through eight model.
So, David, just to let them clear, have you listed four objectives? Have you listed four? I'm getting the sense, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, that really, number one is the driving force, the increased learning opportunities. That the others are really opportunities that come along operationally once that's satisfied. So, that's really what the fundamental test is, is, is there evidence to prove that, or established that this really does provide an increased learning opportunity? And there are other districts around here that operate that way already, so there, there must be some information near hand.
And I, and, you know, the, the, the absence of the words around, you know, best practice or research-based, you can get it both sides. And I have, you know, I have oodles of both sides around that. It's a lot about what you have and what you have for, for services and what you're going to do in that, in that process. There's good examples of successful five-eights, and there's good examples of not, and there's research out there that supports both. But it is, increased learning opportunities is, uh, is the driving force.
So, how does this fit into the twenty-twenty plan as well? I mean, I kind of would want to understand that.
Perfect, so, and part of this is with master planning and visioning. Um, as you know, we have pressures currently at the airport, and we have pressures at Rick Marcon. I think this, this begins the process of working into the longer-range master plan, which begins to take a look at then, um, enrollment and city projections. City, um, city needs and direction, and figuring out what that means for us into the future. Does that mean that, you know, Chamberlain, again, many, many different options, but one example could be, does that mean that down the road, Chamberlain becomes a different configuration? A K-two and a three-four at Orchard, et cetera, right? All kinds of different options, but to, to, I, I'm gonna tell you, to not have this conversation earlier is gonna be problematic for the city of South Burlington, if we don't get on top of it. And that's really the charge of the master planning and visioning, school and city together. You know, there's many, many examples, I think, that, um, are out there. So, yes, this begins what I would say to kick it off, although I think it was kicked off about five years ago, you know? The conversation is well overdue in the city to figure out what we, what we need for services, what we want for city center, and what we need to have for, for, for schools. And you know what? It would be a whole lot easier not to have the conversation and, and coast, but that's not. We, we already know what's going on with, with budgets and looking to the future. We have some challenges, and I say, on the bookend sides, hopefully, we'll have some relief, maybe, eventually. But we also have to do some things differently in the, in the middle.
David, will, um, a couple of questions, will, um, there be an opportunity for community members to weigh in? That's my first question. The second isn't really a question, but I think it would be helpful to have a timeline. Um, so if this is happening, you know, for that particular school year, fifteen, sixteen, like, what activities have to take place at, and when? That would be helpful for me.
Yeah, I've identified some, but they're, they're, they're soft, they're soft deadlines because they're ongoing. It simply begins the charge for the committee, um, to, to begin to look at some very specific things that need to happen. Some are facilities, some are program, you know, um, some are transportation, you know, those particular things, so, absolutely, absolutely. And, um, you know, I felt I needed to go through the process enough to be able to come up with, does it make sense? Is it an, as an appropriate opportunity? And, and ask a lot of those questions. And, and ask a lot of those questions. Do we have space? You know, before I even begin to get there. And the overwhelming answer is that, yes, it is an opportunity and it is, it is workable and doable within the space that we have. So, that's, that is the, the major driving force. I think that also helps me, master planning and visioning, getting it going, and it also helps us to look at what we're doing on those beginning ends as well, how we are welcoming and, and connecting with our community around early childhood services. We're seeing a significant increase in behavior-related issues in our schools right now. And the question around putting additional resources is not something that we can continue. Proactive versus reactive is, is definitely a desire at this point. And again, I think it helps us with that as well.
Other questions? Kathy?
I keep going, I agree, I think it's getting tougher and more difficult with the kids coming in, but I look at your objective number three and I, I can't help but wonder how that is affecting the funding of our schools. So, I'm wondering with the proposed expansion of the pre-K programs, I'm not saying that they're not important or, you know, maybe necessary, but how are we going to fund that? I mean, I would think that we would be needing to put more money then into our budget and that the public would know that it's a K-through-twelve or a pre-K-through-twelve program officially because that would be increasing funds quite significantly. Yes?
So, we're currently already, we do have pre-K in our system.
Right, but I don't think it's to this level, right?
That's correct. And let me be clear about this, these are objectives. One of the charge of the, the objectives would be how did the, each individual elementary school would repurpose the space. So, it may be extended learning opportunities for students, it may be additional learning spaces that in certain schools, we have tight spaces for the, for the numbers of students that are in those classes. It could be a science or math exploration space, et cetera. It could be a community place, focusing a little bit more on welcoming community in or mentoring and things of that nature. So, there's, there's a wide array of things that can work. I want, I want that decision to be a little bit more local at the school, but I want them to look at a variety of things. So-
Okay. Would you understand what my concern was?
Your concern is specific to pre-K.
My concern is just-
Around not getting out of our particular focus as, as a school, I think, and that's what I'm hearing, right?
No, not, not necessarily. No. My, my concern is that the funds that we direct toward K-through-twelve are not being diverted to pre-K-through-twelve. I don't, I don't want to, I mean, our, our, our job is to educate K-through-twelve and it has to be different if we're going to be educating pre-K-through-twelve and the funds-
We bring in a lot of revenue currently-
I understand that, yeah.
-as a result of our, those, our pre-K students. We bring in a lot of revenue as a result of students that are currently participating that are not of, of kindergarten age.
I'm clear on that.
And so, but a lot of money that comes in. So, we have an obligation from my perspective to make sure that we're, we're putting the, an appropriate amount of money into the, into those services. And I particularly believe that although the main focus is K-through-twelve, we need, we need, do need to be mindful and proactive so that we can continue to be a good district and making sure that we're helping children at the most appropriate times and not waiting. And so, that, there, there's kind of a, a very specific focus, K-12. We are a district that has money that's coming in for specific reasons for pre-K and I think that's, that's an important note. A lot of people think it's, you know, we're just funding that. That's not true. We get a good amount of money that comes into the district as a result.
And, and there's, and there's advantages that we reap from having pre-K, of course. I mean, kindergarten classes are easier to teach from what I understand. The kids who have had pre-K are, you know-
Better prepared.
Are easier, are better prepared. And, and it's frequently, you know, it's, but it's frequently kids who may be underprivileged who don't have access to that, who come less prepared.
I get what you're saying.
So, I mean, there's a big, there's a big benefit though.
I get what you're saying, it's a balance.
But it's also not, it's not a foregone conclusion that the space that's freed up would be occupied by pre-K.
That's right.
Okay.
No, I understand, I just, I, it's a monetary thing, not, not a, I, I don't know. Does, I, why, I'm, why am I not getting through?
You do get, you do-
I don't know if it's going to continue to be a money generator and if it's not, then we're going to, then you're going to address that, right? Because then I just don't want the money coming from upper.
I think that will ultimately be a separate budget decision at whatever point David and his team might make that recommendation.
Right.
Okay.
I think, Martin, to summarize your points, I think, you know, I agree with your comments that it's really David's decision to, to recommend and, and to come forward with and to the board with. I do think one of the things you're hearing, David, is sort of broad statements like best practice without some corroboration is, you know, we're not experts, so we'd like to see that. I think you've, you've highlighted a lot of areas already verbally that I think parents would be very interested in hearing about. And, and I would add to that, you know, Common Core Individual Learning Plans, the after-school program and, and even the, the notion of master planning with the city. I, I do think the decision is one thing and all the rationale for that, I think execution is going to be another critical thing and, you know, the board evaluates both. And I guess the last observation I'd make is, this is one big committee here, so I might encourage you to think about a steering committee or an oversight group that is substantially smaller.
Again, this is, these are identified as individuals that I think play, would play a critical role in the collection of the information.
A twenty-five-person committee is hard to-
Yeah. Yeah, and so, it was, it was trying to be clear with people and again, this has not gone out to anybody. And part of what I said to staff as I met with them, I didn't want to do that. I didn't want it, I want it to be heard first verbally and, you know, with some specific focus. And I, and I just, I wanted to say, you know, I look around, I look around my colleagues across the state and the country, it's not popular to try something different and new. It's easier to stay, to stay stagnant and the same. So, while, while you evaluate all, including the implementation, I do think you put me in the place to say, you got to make, you got to make some hard decisions too. And so, you know what? I, I look at a lot of people and have asked a lot, you know, "Why would you want to take that on?" Because I believe it's the right thing to do for children in South Burlington. And I think it would be.
And that just, yeah, that needs to be articulated with some specificity.
Yeah.
I'd also say, I think you in particular with your peer group and this board kind of peripherally had the opportunity to kind of go to school on the calendar two-point-oh ball, as it were.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you, you saw that firsthand.
And I think we all had a chance to understand that not communicating with stakeholders that have a vested interest in any change, whatever the order or magnitude, and understanding sort of the greatest fears associated with that change and mitigating those upfront are critical to being, being able to execute and get the buy-off.
Absolutely.
So, you've got a, a unique opportunity. You've already laid the groundwork here. You've identified a lot of the stakeholders and, you know, your plan incorporates a lot of that opportunity for exchange of ideas and, and understanding of where, you know, where people have concerns.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've already heard many of them, just fifth graders riding on a bus and, and just a whole host of different things, so.
Mm-hmm.
Good. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you. Thank you for the feedback. Thank you for the information.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number eleven, the ends policy, second reading.
That's all right.
Are you going to wait for the third reading?
What's that?
No, no, I, I did have one question where there was a change with respect to academic proficiency, where before we talked about having a second language and now it's just called a world language. And there was a lot of discussion about saying second language, which would be inclusive of world languages and computer language.
Correct, yeah.
And I don't know if we want this change. I mean, I'm fine with it being world language and taking technology encompass-
Does computer, yeah, does, does computer technology encompass that kind of-
No, I don't think so.
Computer programming language?
I don't think so.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, I mean, well, that's the, the thing, we can reconsider that. I mean, I, I personally think-
So, you think, I'm just, I want to make sure I heard.
I, I just wanted to make sure I pointed that out first. I, I'm not necessarily saying I don't like this, but it is a, you know, a fairly big change from where we were talking about second language, which would include computer languages and such. But that's not necessarily what we want to say, especially if we think technology is where learning, programming languages, that's the place for that.
Mm-hmm.
And, and keep it at world language. Do, is what we really want to encourage is having bilingual students, not just somebody who can-
Knows a second language.
Knows a programming language, which, yes, I understand that's a language, but it's a whole kind of different thing. It's not for, I mean, I'm fine with it just actually saying world language despite, I just wanted to raise that though in case others had overlooked it and weren't fine with that.
I think that the, I think that the programming falls under technology appropriately, myself.
And I, and I remember the discussion that took place around world language versus second language.
Second language.
And I remember the discussion that came up about, you know, that we don't require language.
Well, we don't, yeah, we don't require programming.
Right. So, I just, I just want to make sure that whatever we use is a good fit for our requirements. I mean, the fact that it says experience that includes, I mean, it could be some of these, but not necessarily all of these may include or that includes. I don't, I don't know. I'm tired of making sense.
Well, I just want to, you know, it's a little bit of a shift because before it was a list of-
Right, yeah.
-the things you took. I mean, there are two aspects of it. One is the ends. That is, what is the skill set that you have? We're going to be talking as we shift from Carnegie units to proficiency based on, you know, the state's nuance. What is a proficient student? That is, what courses they will have to take and to what proficiency, not, not credit hours. So, it's a, it's a different shift of conversation. But the question is after they've taken whatever that is, course of study, what skill set will they have? So, the top part may shift a little, some kids may do all of it, some kids may do some of it. We'll have a balance that says, you know, you have to be proficient in art to this extent, world language to this extent. Those are the, the opportunities that are coming, so to speak.
Yeah, I think that, I think that the actual language though, so this says experience that includes and it implies that includes all these things.
Right.
So, I think if that's not accurate, we need to change the language.
Well, I think it is accurate, but the, the, that's, I mean, it's accurate at this moment to what the-
I see what you're saying.
To what the policies are, but they're not going to be the same two years from now.
Well, and it's not accurate based on what our current requirements are.
Well, that's right. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
So, for, for example, right now, Carnegie unit-wise, you don't need a world language at the high school.
Right.
The reality is eighty-five percent take a world language. But we could make that part of our proficiencies when we do the proficiencies and say, "All kids need to have this level of proficiency in world language." Because we're going to have to look at that whole piece. You know, the, the, you know, not to add too much complication, you know, the State Board of Ed yesterday or the day before did come out with their new quality standards and they lowered class size in a number of places.
Hmm.
Is this self-dictation?
Well, no, there's a number of pieces in terms of, they lowered to that the, a teacher shouldn't have more than a hundred students. Right now, it's a hundred and twenty-five.
Have they given recommendations about how to fund that?
Well, that's the piece we're going to be facing as we go. So, I don't know what they're going to put around the proficiencies.
Mm-hmm.
You know, in other words, what they're going to say that-
Right.
-this is the, you know, so it's going to be an ongoing discussion.
So, I think for our current, I think for how it reads currently, it needs to match what we currently do.
Right.
Well, this is, no, not necessarily. This is, this is aspirational. I mean, this is what we're shooting for. We don't want to put it down to what we might have right now.
Agreed.
I think we do want to have our, our graduates proficient in world language.
That's what you want.
I mean, that's, you know, and, and the best way to do that, it would be having them all start learning Spanish in kindergarten, but we're not there budget-wise, but that's aspirational. So, I think it's fine to have world language in there even though only eighty-five percent. That's still pretty good.
Well, and, and the thing is actually almost all, so, so the thing is, I think you have to not look at this as a high school lens because this is our whole program and actually ninety-something percent of middle school kids now have three years of world language. So, you know, whether they're proficient when they come out, you know, and that leads them to more world language, you know, so that the average kid, eighty-five percent of them are having five to six years of a world language, which is actually pretty good in the reality. So, I think it's important to say, "Oh, but this isn't just the high school Carnegie units, this is our whole program," you know, "And within our whole program, we want our kids to have all these opportunities."
That's a good point, yeah.
So, I think that it's fine to say it the way it is right now.
Okay.
Were there any other questions or comments?
Well, I guess just another larger question as far as, I know that we, there's been administration, you know, building administrator input and buy-in for this, which I think is important. How far do we have to go to reach out for teachers to have buy-in? Is there a reason to reach out to the SBEA to get buy-in on this or, or is that not? I mean, the reason I say this is I want this to work, so I want the stakeholders to have buy-in.
Well, I mean, that's really David's job to reach out to whatever groups he feels he needs to do.
Well, not necessarily. This is the board's ends.
Yeah, but-
So, I mean, we, we need to make sure that we think that the stakeholders-
Specifically not trying to make it the board's ends.
District ends.
District ends.
Well, the district, well, thank you.
And you're trying to get into the mini-gritty.
Yeah, that, boy, that was completely contrary to what I've been saying, wasn't it? What, what time, it's ten to, it's ten to ten, my brain is going dead.
Good, good catch there.
Thank you, thank you for that.
I mean, I think, Martin, you know, your, your desire is right, but I think, you know, this is where we need to make sure that it reads right for you, for us, around clarity around what we want.
Right.
Our work, my work, steward's work, administrators' work is to make sure that that's communicated with clarity to the, to the, to the staff. Now, we have been working on that with our current ends, although, as I said before, it's confusing because we haven't had clarity around which ends. Are they the SB five and six at the high school, et cetera? You know that story.
Yeah.
So, we, we work to provide clarity about the ends and collecting evidence specific to, to our ends. This, I believe, will, you know, help clarify even further that, you know, we're, we're moving forward. You know, the board-
Well, one of the pieces of administrative buy-in is their knowledge and their ability to say that this more aligns with what they're already trying to do with teachers.
Right, okay.
You know, that was one of their contradictions before.
Now, we could ask if you would like, you know, to do some, you know, providing, getting some, you know, through a protocol, if you will, you know, with the administrators through a teachers' meeting, we'd like to, the board and administrator would like to have just your opinion on, does this provide, you know, clarity to you around our ends?
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
Yeah.
I mean, that, they're ultimately the ones who are-
Right.
-going to be fulfilling these ends.
So, you'd like their input before they become-
Right. Maybe buy-in is not necessary because, well, yeah, some would want, want that as well.
I don't, I don't see that as a bad thing at all. Again, I, I want to support the administrators that it's likely these conversations, you know, are, you know, are, are happening on a regular basis and reflect that, but I think it's, I think it's fine.
Well, I think it'd be important.
Yep, so we can do it.
Any other comments? All right, we'll schedule that for a third reading.
Mm-hmm.
All right. We have agenda item number 12, a resolution to adjust the support staff pension plan.
Yeah, and this is required signature. And I think it's in the, what you want to talk about first. Any questions?
Can I, I'll put the motion on the table, so then we can discuss afterwards. I move that we adopt the resolution that John has provided us to change the SBSD retirement plan. Hopefully, there's a second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? John, do you want to describe the recommendation, please, so we have that?
Yes. The recommendation is to, this solidifies in our plan document the changes that have been made through labor negotiations and to our non-union, our non-union support staff benefits and the business manager to change from closing out our defined benefit plan as of September 11th and switching to a defined contribution plan. And also, this is a notice that goes here. We'll go out with, to all members in the plan this week, along with their statement of benefits that we have. So, accomplishes two things.
Okay. Okay. Are there any questions from the board?
I guess the one question I had was, the further resolved that blank is authorized to execute said plan. And I'm wondering who that person?
Well, as far as the plan document goes, I'm the trustee.
Okay.
So, your name should be on this there?
Yes.
Okay.
Got it. I understand. Yeah.
That clarification.
All right. So, we have a motion to approve the recommendation to amend the support staff retirement plan document. All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. All right. Agenda item 13, set the agenda for the January 8th meeting.
Mm-hmm, I know.
This is packed.
Unweave.
Got it. So, we have a third reading on the ends policy. That's something that's carried over.
I want the R and D for the legislation.
Mm-hmm. A lot of time we'll be back on the budget stuff. And given the hour of tonight, I know it takes a lot of time. Particularly, we have some new information. We'll be back providing you.
Anything else that needs to be on there?
Tuition, John. Does that need to get added to this?
Oh, there's-
Tuition announcement?
Announced tuition. It's all part of the budget, but-
We don't need to call that out, right? Or do we? Action by the board on announced tuition?
Yes, we should.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
It's a separate action.
Yeah. So, I'll add announced tuition.
Okay. Unless there's anything else, any additional future agenda items we need to look at? Was there any specific discussion with Kevin Dorn about the grant on the airport?
I've not had any update from him. He's been busy with airport stuff this week. But I will be following up with him on that.
Okay. All right. Unless there's anything else on future agenda, let's go to item 15 and consider the minutes of the meeting of December 2nd. Any comments, changes? All right. Seeing none, those will be approved. The meeting minutes of December 4th.
I have a typo on the document.
Okay. With one minor change. Any other changes? All right. By consensus, those are approved. And the meeting minutes of December 9th. And by consensus, those are approved. All right. We have consent agenda item number 16. Do you want to review that?
Mm-hmm. So, what's in front of you with the consent agenda is a request to leave for Chris Manazur, who is a 1.0 FT math teacher here at the middle school for the remainder of this school year, 13, 14.
Any questions? Do you have a motion to approve the leave request as recommended?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's approved. And we've got a, is it an action item on number 18?
Yes.
Okay.
Should put an action. I'm sorry.
So, unless there's any questions on AP orders 22 and 23, we have an action item on an accounts payable check to the Burlington School District in the amount of $70,920. Do you want to just give a quick overview of that, David or John?
John, mine.
There, this is, the two invoices involve, one was for school choice, and that's $25,000 for parts of five different kids. And they're students that were in the program last year. And you might notice that there was a, on one of the pages, that Burlington had inadvertently tried to bill us for one that was new, because we didn't pay that. I know it was inadvertent, though. And then Horizon, the Horizon program, we budgeted in for five student slots in that program this year, and that's, this is the annual billing. That's the only thing you'll see for that this year, of $45,000.
Bringing it to 70.
Yeah, the total brings $70,920.
Okay. So, unless there's questions, do I have a motion to approve the AP check to the Burlington School District?
No, ma'am.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. All right. Why don't we fill out the board's self-evaluation while David, you go through announcements?
Mm-hmm.
If we could do that.
So, we're fast approaching the last few days before the break goes on. So, I just want to let you know, there's a lot going on. There's, Chamberlain's got a winter sing-along, which is on the 19th, 1:45. Legislative Breakfast, a reminder that that's at 7:30 at City Hall on January 6th. And then we have the regional legislative breakfast. And again, these are at your place, so you can have them as well, on Monday, the 13th, at the Sheridan, from 7:30 to 9:00. For those of you who are interested in going to that, you can let Delina know. And then these neighborhood learning conversations, I will invite Patrick on, or has invited folks to participate. And again, a lot of people have a lot of information about this, community learning conversations. And I want to try to get out ahead of this, although it kind of got out ahead of us around some of the work that's happening around these community learning conversations, which is part of some of the work Jason Kushner's doing through the Roland, as a Roland fellow currently in his work.
So, what's the objective of that?
Really, to try to provide, what I'm going to say, ideas and information from students around, you know, what do they see in education, visioning for the future kind of ideas. Again, thought-provoking conversations with students to really try to engage, you know, and inform relevant, engaged learning. I don't know. You have anything to add to that, Stuart?
I don't. I mean, I think it's, that's a good summary.
This Rowland Fellow, what is Rowland Fellow?
Yes, the Roland Fellow.
Rowland. What, can you describe that?
The Roland, I don't know a ton about it. So, he's a Roland fellow. He's supported in part by the Roland Foundation. The Roland Foundation is particularly engaged with a lot of, you know, outside-the-box thinking around learning. This is part of where the Big Picture program has been funded through. And so, Jason Kushner has been awarded that fellowship to expand thinking within our district around how to bring forward continued opportunities for students in our community as we, as we move forward. So, there's some very specific things that the Roland Fellow does and needs to do, this being one of them, to collect information from our student body, not just within the big picture, but to have a conversation, you know, around the types of learning that they feel is, would be helpful.
Is that fellowship something the school chose to support, or is that individually?
Well, it's in part individually, has to be an individual effort. And then, if the individual obviously is awarded, the school has to accept, you know, those services as well. So, in fact, they quite align to the, they do align to the big picture, since we are a big-picture program. And so, it's a natural kind of fit in that way.
Okay. All right. Any other announcements?
So, just Martin and I both had a chance to do some of the big-picture exhibitions this week. And we were grateful for the opportunity to be invited and to be in school. And kudos to the kids. They did a good job.
Yeah, it was very interesting.
Thanks.
Okay. The board self-evaluation, the superintendent feedback, couple disagrees as far as data being provided in a timely manner. The data was, some of the, a lot of the information came in. We understand, I mean, I understand-
Got it.
-why that is, but still, it was late in the day. And agenda was followed, two people disagree with the, that the agenda was followed in adequate time allowed for board discussion with respect to the published schedule to the public, never enough time for the budget, was one comment. And there's one, no opinion on the school board meeting evaluation as to agenda items were prioritized and moved from the parking lot to future meeting dates.
All right. Unless there's anything else, I'll take a motion to adjourn?
Just one thing. The Christmas tree pickup, music department fundraiser, January 4th and January 11th. If you choose to participate, it's a great fundraiser, earns a lot of money for the music department and students.
Okay. All right. Motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good rest of the week and holiday, yes.